Ninety percent comes from grants and donations and small membership fees. So again, I urge you to please reconsider our request and the other request to provide much needed senior services. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, next person.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Ryan Hunter and I'm here tonight, uh, representing Jewish Family Services of Washtenaw County. And it is a pleasure to be here. I will keep my comments short. Uh, I may come back and speak at the, uh, open meeting, uh, but just wanted to be sure to clarify that as some of you may know, I, I wear several different hats. And tonight it's, um, imperative that I underline that I am wearing my Jewish Family Services hat tonight. So very glad to see you. Um, had a great conversation with Commissioners Light and Commissioner Sanders earlier this week. Uh, it was a great, uh, chance for us as an organization and as an agency to get to know some of the board. And I hope that conversation continues beyond tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the audience? Do we have anyone online?
I believe we do.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner Yusuf Rabi.
Commissioner Rabi.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Awesome. I'm just calling in to say hi. I'm homesick with COVID, but, um, I'm watching. Wish I could be there with all of you. Uh, make good decisions. That's all.
We hope you heal and get well quickly. All righty, moving on, we have a report from our wonderful county administrator.
Good evening. Can you all hear me?
We can.
All right. Well, thank you. I just want to first thank the technology team for, uh, my ability to be in the space this evening. Uh, I am in Austin, Texas, and it is very warm here. Uh, but, uh, but just wanted to say thank you to all of you for the opportunity to participate. Uh, tonight you will have the budget for two years, twenty twenty-four through twenty-seven. I am grateful to the response that we've received throughout this process from our colleagues in the organization. And also, uh, what you'll hear tonight are some, uh, components of recommendations around the, your investments, uh, to into services in our community. Again, thanks to the organization, Tina Gavallier, the executive team and Catherine Jones, author for putting all of this together and, and putting it together in a way that I think responds to the needs of the organization. Lastly, you will see in the presentation, a target date of November fifteenth for, uh, this budget to be adopted. Certainly, there's a lot of work that we need to do between now and then, and I'm hopeful, optimistic that we can get to a place where you all, as a board, can adopt something that you are supportive of. So with that, that'll, that'll conclude my report.
Thank you so much, Administrator Dell. We hope you enjoy the weather. Next, we have a report from the Board of Commissioners Liaison.
Karen, I do not have a report today, but I promise during the next meeting, I will have a report for all of you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Moving on to our main event, um, we have Catherine from, um, the Finance Office to give us a presentation on the budget.
Thank you. Let me screen shoot. So thank you all. As Administrator Dell said, um, there's a lot of work that has gone into this budget across the organization. Um, and it was Tina and I, but also we are well supported by the budget team analysts. So I want to take a quick minute and introduce them all to you. Um, since they were the backbone of our organization. So if you guys can stand up. So we have Alex Waterhouse, the Finance Reporting and Special Projects Administrator, and then the analysts are Rachel Rosenberg, Ben Harani and Marie Pfeiffer. Um, we would not be here without them. So I just wanted to give them all a little bit of credit. So, thank you all. Okay, with that, we're going to dive in. Um, before I get into the numbers and all of the fun, I wanted to quick, um, set the stage of where we are at and what we have been doing since twenty twenty-two and setting up for this budget development. Um, last year, we first launched the idea of creating a purpose of each year of the budget process. Um, and we turned twenty twenty-two in the first, into the first budget prep year. So that twenty twenty-three, we could focus on budget development instead of trying to get all of the data together and then plan for the future at the same time. Um, and then what we plan to do moving forward is using each year to set up the next budget development cycle. So next year, we'll go into reviewing existing county programs for priorities. And then using the year two twenty twenty-five for strategic planning and vision. Um, and then we will lay that, use that in the framework to make the next, next budget prep year, the following year. And we can continue to do the cycle and make budget development a little more attainable for the organization as a whole. Um, so what this looks like and where we are at, what we've accomplished, we completed twenty twenty-two, the budget prep year. We launched the idea of program-based budgeting. Our goal is to move to the next development cycle, being a full program-based budgeting development cycle. And then from there, we can move to priority-based development rather than trying to really, um, do it all at one time. Uh, so this year, we are looking at program-based budgeting. We ran a department budget request process that was aimed at programs that county departments and elected officials are offering. We aim to evaluate programs and right-sized services and FTEs that work got more complicated by current, um, rates of vacancies, et cetera. So we are planning a full position review next year to really be able to dive into that. Um, and then looking to identify and evaluate metrics of success for each of those programs that will still be coming to you. Um, and then, as I said, we'll be moving through the process with doing full program review and update next year and planning and vision. And again, really building toward that future of being able to budget based on programs and priorities of the organization. For budget calendar, um, there's a lot of work we've done. We just wanted to lay it out here. The ones in orange are the budget task force dates where they were instrumental in getting the department request process through. Um, and really having the view of county departments on those requests before, um, we made the recommendations from, from the administrator. Uh, moving forward after tonight, when we're bringing you the recommended budget. Um, October thirteenth and October twenty-seventh, we're also trying another thing of creating, um, Board of Commissioner Budget Office Hours. Uh, where I will be available, Tina will be available for any questions that you all have, having that time set aside outside of the normal working sessions and meetings. Um, and then November first will be our public hearing on the budget and then the targeted first reading. And then with November fifteenth being the targeted adoption of the budget. And then assuming that happens by February fifteenth, we will be publishing our final budget summary. So during the past few years, we have accomplished a lot to get to where we're at. Um, so we've introduced that program-based budgeting framework. We implemented the MAC compensation study. Um, we have adjusted for the twenty twenty-three equalization report and the labor impacts from the agreements. Um, based on the increase we received. We ran the budget request process, um, where over sixty-five, seventy-sixty-nine requests were scored by the department or by the organization. Um, which led to administrator recommended budget requests. One of the things that I think is really cool about this budget that we haven't been able to do in the past, um, for commissioners who have been here a while. We always have this long conversation about the contribution to fund balance and use of fund balance. And we average them out to even it out over four years to really make that four-year picture work. Uh, we didn't have to do that this year. The way we use the budget request process, we were really able to allocate resources when they were available. Um, so I really liked that. Um, and then we, I've worked with departments to build program inventories for each. Uh, and then just a quick look at the budget request process. I'm not going to go too deep. In two weeks, I'll be here for working session again, and we'll be going through all of the requests at that time. Um, but in general, departments were, um, required to provide demographic data, information about the request, the level of mandate, the impact it would have on equity, climate action, building a safe and healthy community. And then as well as the data on expenses, revenues and cost savings. Um, they were asked to submit a request for anything outside of a carryforward operational budget. Um, and so we did get a number of requests to really see what the needs are in the organization. So the numbers card, uh, for the general fund, the recommended general fund budget, um, starts at a hundred and forty-six point eight million in twenty twenty-four. It grows through twenty twenty-six to a hundred and fifty point nine million. Twenty twenty-seven, you see a reduction. This is because county practice is to not budget for voter-approved millages that have, after they have expired. So the mental health and public safety millage is slated to expire in twenty twenty-six. So we do not budget it for twenty twenty-seven. That is the only drop we're seeing in the general fund. So I just wanted to get that out there because it looks different than you all are used to seeing. On the revenue side, this is very similar to what you all are expecting. Our general operating village um, and taxes in general are our biggest revenue source for the general fund. Again, this is where you see that drop. Um, for taxes for the mental health and public safety millage for the county portion that goes into the general fund. Um, fees, services, licenses, permits, funds and fortress or features, we have projected to grow very slightly. A lot of that is tied to reimbursement rates, um, for staff that are dependent on, um, current or estimated expenditures for those staff. Federal, state and local revenues are estimated to remain relatively flat between the years as well as the net transfers, other revenue reimbursement and interest earnings. Uh, when we look at a category level as a whole, we see that the general government service area is seventy-three percent of revenues. Again, that is the general operating village plus the state revenue sharing, marijuana dollars, seed liquor tax. There's one other one I'm missing. Oh, um, personal property tax reimbursement. So that makes up the chunk of general government revenues that are really funding across organizations, across the organization. Public Safety and Justice is twenty-two percent of revenues. That's the PSU contracts we talk about, um, relatively. And then civic infrastructure, land use and support services round out the revenue about five percent. On the expenditure side, again, pretty common to what we've been seeing a whole lot. Um, public safety and justice in the general fund is the largest bucket of expenditures. Um, followed by support services. Um, Health and Human Services is just appropriations to non-general fund programming. Um, plus a small piece that had to move into the general fund for accounting reasons. Uh, general government is the overarching expenditures that can't really be attributed to any specific department. Um, and then we see the cap expense credit. We call that out separately because it technically acts as a revenue. Um, one thing I want to highlight here that plays out in the rest of the conversation is traditionally in the past, the highest we've ever seen this cap expense credit come in based on the, um, maximus that does our cost allocation plan has been about twenty million dollars. This year's cap came in at twenty-four million. Um, Tina and I, the administration, relatively conservative and nervous about treating that as a structural revenue when it's the first time we've ever experienced anything that high. Um, so in the budget recommendations that we'll be going through in a bit, we're treating that as non-structural revenue. Um, and the things that we have allocated it to are things that if we had to would be the first things we'd pull back. But if we can confirm that it's the new norm, we can look at it becoming a structural investment. But we didn't want to tie it to positions and then have it not be real and then be in a very different conversation one year from now. We did reduce that a little bit, um, for the out years for some things that we know are changing because of, um, ARPA using, paying for some of the infrastructure dollars, um, and some one-time expenditures, again, trying to be as conservative as possible, but um, also using the data that we had available. Uh, from an expenditure standpoint, personal services sixty-four percent. Again, this is what we usually see. There's nothing um, earth-shattering in this pie chart, uh, transfers out as twenty-one percent. This is our appropriations to non-general fund programming or the county matches we have to do for a lot of the state and federal grants that we get. And then, uh, only thirteen percent goes into programming and operations, which would be supplies, contracts, et cetera. Um, and a smaller part for internal services and then reserves for the future. Uh, in the cover memo and resolution that you all have, um, in the packet for later tonight. Um, we always bring up budgeted position grid change. So I just wanted to highlight what is in that grid. Um, thirteen FTS are reclassified. Uh, there's breakdown by departments. These were all vetted through differing processes, including the JAQ budget request, um, and other conversations that were happening, uh, meaning ongoing, like dealing with other things. Uh, the creation of eight and a half FTS, there are three FTS that were recommended to be created coming out of the budget request process. Um, one of the prosecuting attorney, one incorporation council and a one-year funding pilot project for administration. Uh, and then four and a half FTE were created with already existing available resources. Meaning we're not having to put general fund dollars toward these is either cleanup of position control issues or funding was available in like the Parks Fund or OCD with grant funds, water resources had revenue that covered it as well as CMH. And so those are net position increase, but they're not impacting the general fund. So what we're all excited about, uh, to get to the budget recommendations, we had to make a bunch of adjustments. Um, revenues were updated for property taxes, um, the state revenues for revenue sharing marijuana, liquor tax, personal property tax reimbursement. Um, and then any growth in department revenues such as the PSU rate contracts, dispatch contracts. Updating, I said, the mental health and public safety millage as well as reimbursement agreements, um, in other county departments. The expenditure adjustments are the same ones we always make, starting first with salary projections for existing full-time positions. Updating fleet, updating our cap costs based on the most recent cap, which was based on the twenty twenty-two audited expenditures. Um, additionally, knowing there are ongoing conversations about community corrections. Um, we changed the five hundred thousand dollars that was made one time at the last meeting to be a structural contribution as we wait for the CJCC to complete their work. Um, and then any departmental requests that were submitted that were either net neutral, meaning they had cost savings or revenues tied to them that would fund them or had under ten thousand dollars on a structural operational cost. We built them into the budget to see if we had resources available for the small things that that would do. And we were able to, um, absorb those and still have revenues available or resources available for other investments. So the net neutral budget recommendations, um, the first one on the list, the treasurer has won a number of awards for their, um, automation anywhere robots booking revenue. So they made a request for additional licenses to expand that work. Um, and they can fund it with interest earnings. So that's being recommended as well as part-time temporary staff that is being funded partially by interest earnings as well as expenditure um, cuts in other areas that they, for lines they haven't had to use. And then OCD put in both position reclasses and creations, um, to align their staff between different program models and then also to, um, replace staff that had been temporary employees, replace them with actual full-time and regular, um, one and a half FTE. So that it is more in alignment with our union contracts or using county employees to do the work instead of tempers. The minor cost budget adjustments that were included is additional payment and cash handling training for the treasurer. Um, stormwater permit programs, expanding those operations. Um, an IT vendor remote access management tool. This has a higher cost in twenty twenty-four. Again, we had a lot of non-structural dollars available, which I'll go to in a minute, um, but a smaller operational cost in the future. Um, and this will make sure that IT can manage any software vendors who are accessing our servers and making sure we are secure in that realm. Um, and then lastly, the MSU extension asks for an increase to their base contract. This is existing, maintaining existing services. So one of the things we've talked a lot about every time I'm here with quarterly update is court revenues. Um, we are able to reduce district court revenues by nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars, which is offset by that state personal property tax reimbursement. Um, when the state discontinued personal property taxes, they said they would be reimbursing us, but we didn't really know how much, what it would look like. We've now experienced it for a number of years. So we're budgeting what we received last year from twenty twenty-two actuals, which provided the opportunity for that offset. The trial court revenues haven't been adjusted, um, and that is because they are at the moment able to offset them with expenditure surpluses. Um, and so we're going to have, continue ongoing discussions with them, but at the moment, um, we're going to keep the status quo in the trial court. So in the end, this resulted in two point one five million dollars available for structural resources. We averaged the amount available from twenty-four through twenty-seven. Then non-structural resources, we have almost six million in twenty-four and then two point four million in twenty-five through twenty-seven. Again, that's tied back to that cap expense credit largely, um, and waiting to see what the new norm is for that. So for structural recommendations, before we went to department request process, the department request process, the administrator had a couple of other items we wanted to look at first. The, um, first being making sure we have dollars set aside for any twenty twenty-five compensation. Um, adjustments or being able to expand what we can offer during current labor negotiations. So we're able to reserve resources, um, to continue those negotiations. And then already the board has set aside one and a half million dollars for compensation for low-wage earners, county employees. Um, and this increases that reserve by five hundred thousand to help be able to address the lower end of wage earners in the organization. The next, uh, bucket of structural recommendations is coming out of the community conversations that have been so heavily in front of you all. Um, and making a recommendation of almost four hundred and five thousand dollars a year for the, for both housing and homelessness and the East Side Recreation and Community Center to make sure we can get those priorities met. We have resources available to be operationalized, um, as makes sense. We aren't recommending how we operationalize them. We are just making sure they are available to be operationalized. Um, and then there are two requests that came out of the department request process. The first is the Labor Relations Attorney. Um, this is targeted at helping either contain costs. If we're lucky, reduce costs a little bit, um, below budget, but we are looking at potentially being over budget in attorney's fees and wanted to get around that and get expertise in-house that would be able to address, um, our, any labor needs that we have. Um, and then the second is one additional APA for the Prosecuting Attorneys Economic Justice Unit. This is continuing existing services that were started by a grant that were done by a fellowship. Um, and making sure it's funded structurally into the future. Non-structural recommendations, there's another large component available in twenty twenty-four because we targeted structural dollars at wages in twenty twenty-five. Um, so we are direct, looking at directing a large chunk, um, of one point one million dollars toward both housing and homelessness and the East Side Recreation and Community Center, similar to the structural dollars, uh, making sure they're reserved to be operationalized, however we need to do that. Um, the department requests that are being recommended are high-scoring requests, um, that came through the request process that we had resources available. Um, we did not want to tie them to positions again because of the type of resource it was, but also given the unprecedented vacancy rate we've had in the county, making sure we had the time to do a full position review. So outside of those two positions for labor relations and for the economic justice unit, all of the other position requests are put on hold pending a position review to take place next year, making sure we don't grow our footprint and then keep budgeting for vacant positions that aren't going to be used. So those are pending. Um, it is nice. We have a list of needs in the organization that we can really use to help drive some of that process. Um, so what is being recommended is increasing the Washtenaw Health and Allocation by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Um, extending prescription for health for post ARPA. So ARPA is funding it through twelve thirty-one, twenty-four. So we'll pick up funding in, um, in twenty twenty-five and beyond for a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Uh, adding an additional MSU educator, um, to the contract that we already have in place. Um, administration has had a number of operational, um, impacts that have forced it to be over budget for a while. And so we're trying to address that. Um, and then lastly, creating a one-year, one-year funding for a pilot project of the Resiliency Officer to help get the climate action plan um, up and running. And again, that's also part of the position review before we dedicate, um, structural resources to it, but wanting to not have to wait to get those. Uh, the other non-structural recommendations, a number we're targeted at, the infrastructure departments. Uh, IT network server virtualization is our digital storage, making sure we can keep all of our records in place. We have enough space to save everything. We need, making sure we're properly budgeted for that. Um, the electric vehicle charging network was our highest scoring request in the department request process. And it would be establishing chargers at multiple county buildings. Um, facilities has also been hit with a number of operational cost increases, um, with every vendor increasing from janitorial to lawn maintenance. And the, um, we used to have utility savings that were kind of smooth those out, but with utility rates rising, it's been, um, a difficult way to manage the budget. So we wanted to make sure that they have the operational budget to be able to support the county, um, organization. The last three are IT ones that are heavily front-loaded in twenty twenty-four for implementation costs, but have much smaller ongoing operational costs. The prosecuting attorney case management system is one that if we don't do, will be out of compliance. So that was, um, one that we knew would be necessary as well as upgrading the website and refreshing the techno AV technology at the LRC. Those have minimal operational impact into the future. And then the last recommendation for non-structural general fund dollars is contributions to the risk fund. As you all probably remember, last year, um, we had large claims in the risk fund and we had to transfer general fund resources to avoid it from going into a deficit. So what we're looking to do is intentionally start to rebuild that fund balance for future claims and make sure that we are set up where we're not going to have to go after the general fund, um, for any claims in the future. So it's attempting to set us up a little bit of a security policy or insurance policy for the financials. Uh, the last round, and this isn't in the cover memo and resolution, we'll be bringing a separate item on this at the next meeting. Um, but in, I can't remember which ARPA one allocation, four million dollars was set aside for internal government services and was, um, administration was directed to run a process to assess requests. Given what was directed there and what we were doing in the budget request process, we decided to use the budget request process to see what we could allocate from ARPA dollars. Um, making sure it would meet the ARPA eligibility requirements, especially around the timelines, given that we're already in the third quarter of twenty twenty-three. Um, so the ones that non-structural requests that were made that would meet that are solar panels at the LRC and JL and Z Road, um, offset by some rebates. Also, these will likely, um, reduce operational costs in the future, which is beneficial to the budget as a whole. Um, creating an energy and sustainability study, building a solar carport at the Service Center Z and Towner. And the last one is replacing the vehicle and inventory unit, um, which is where water resources stores their large equipment um, and other supplies. Um, and as one, I, I've been here for fifteen years and I've probably been hearing about this for about fifteen years. So I'm very excited to have funding available to really meet this need that's been existing for a long time. Uh, another change that will be made in this budget that isn't necessarily tied to financials, but how we're presenting information is we created a new board code that summarizes board priority allocations. What this does is reflect those priority allocations under the Board of Commissioners budget instead of under general government. I think it helps highlight what you all are doing. That's the goal of it. Um, currently budgeted in it are the allocations for housing and homelessness and the East Side Recreation Center. Um, and then we have the undesigned allocation, which is waiting to be, um, allocated by you all. Um, for any purpose that, um, best meets your priorities. Um, in the past, we used to have a BOC priority bucket and an undesigned bucket. Those are both now just in one. So we're only dealing with one, uh, of money. Um, if it's allocated to structural needs, then once it's allocated, it will be, um, reduced down to zero. And we won't have to keep talking about the undesigned allocation, but it is a pot of money available for one-time needs or, um, other purposes that meet your priorities. Um, just as a conversation topic for you all to think about, I highlighted a number of other allocations we have out, uh, that have come out of board priority discussions and looking for feedback, information. If they make sense to move into this org, we want to keep it on just those new ones. Um, mostly to get your minds thinking about it a little bit, um, looking at the Youth Commission, Sheltering Activities, Human Services Partnerships, um, Barrier Busters, Addiction Prevention, Immigrant Rights Center. And Historic District are ones that have taken place recently. Um, but if there's anything that really makes sense, um, you can talk to me, can talk to Ashley, we can talk through what, um, adjustments need to be made to move those in, um, to that new work priority org. Uh, lastly, as I talked earlier, we're adding these BOC budget discussion dates for the office hours. So making sure you all have those available, so October thirteenth and then the twenty-seventh from three to four. Um, they'll be available to answer any questions. Um, I think they have those dates scheduled, right? They'll be on your calendar soon. They'll be on your calendar soon for subquorum discussions. So we have, I've been through a lot before I keep diving into service areas and everything else. I just wanted to give a moment for any questions you all might have on current budget recommendations as we present them.
I'm going to start on the right side, Commissioner Hatch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I know this has been a lot of work to put this together. I've seen and talked to you about iterations of the draft as you've done it. Could you talk a little bit about the process that the team went through to do the budget recommendations? I thought it was a really robust process and it included a lot of stakeholders within the organization. So I think it would be helpful for everybody to understand how much time and effort went into that by the number of people that participated.
Yes, I don't want to vary the league because we are going to go into a lot of it in two weeks. But yes, we had a cross-departmental team that represented administration of every service area group had a representative on the budget task force. They've reviewed budget requests that happened. The analysts have worked collaboratively with departments to make sure that the requests were vetted and reasonable. And had the right dollar amounts associated with them before they were requested so that we could really see what was happening. The other thing that's really cool for the first time is we really can look at what impacts these requests might have. So like as a data nerd, it made me very excited of like which request came in and kind of moved the needle on different priorities. And not just based on, I think I will know as I will say, as the person who submitted requests on behalf of finance. I was like, yeah, this is going to be great. It's going to do everything. And having somebody be like, it's a little less great is is useful to make sure we're having a really good view of across the organization. Yeah, it's cool.
It is cool. The other thing I would add that I thought was really cool is the form that you've developed to share with all the commissioners to do the budget request. So it's a good looking form. It'll be really easy to use, user friendly. It'll be really simple to decide where you will pull money from for your budget requests. You're going to send that out.
You're getting, I'm going to send it out after this meeting, but you're going to see a demo of it.
Sorry, I'm not trying to steal your thunder. It's good stuff.
I like that you're hyping it up for the rest.
Well, yeah, okay, stay tuned. You're real good.
I appreciate it.
It is. All right. That's it for now.
All right. Anyone over here? Commissioner Matjeski.
Thank you, Chair. Could you talk about the risk fund? Again, you're allocating 640,000 into the risk fund. Where would that put the balance of the risk fund? Is that starting off from zero?
It, well, depending on how 2023 ends. So it started off as zero in 2023. I think we're projecting a small shortfall in 2023, not to $600,000 level. And then Internal Service Fund, which is the type of fund risk is we try to get to 60 days of operations. We are far, far away from from that for the cost, the amount of insurance costs and et cetera, other things that run for the risk fund. But we can build out, if you'd like, I can like build out like where, how it would be estimated to grow with this revenue.
Yeah, my follow-up to that was going to be what is your goal? And it sounds like 60-day, 60 days of operations.
At a minimum.
Is that, is that an auditor provided goal?
For Internal Service Fund, yes.
Okay, so if you got to 60 days, what would that dollar amount end up being?
We can get it.
That was my final question. If you want to move on to others that are doing that.
Okay, anyone else on the side of the room? Anyone on my right? All right, Commissioner LaBar.
Thanks, Chair. I think this great presentation, I really appreciate how you've put it out graphically. I always get a little worried about program budgeting just because it's not incremental and it's harder. But I think you have the the tools and talent there to go into it successfully. I just wanted to highlight a few quick things, though. Earlier in the year, we did get a presentation from three outside entities that talked about child services. SOS, CAN, and Peace Neighborhood Center. We also got a letter that I want to say was within last month or so about food programs winding down and increased costs there. I can't recall those numbers off the top of my head, but I do think that would be good, something good for us to consider in the context of budget discussions. And do they and can they fit in here? But that's down the road. Tina, what I'd really like to know, though, is what is the gap between what we've got in our reserves? And the policy we adhere to that you referenced, I don't know, two or three months ago? In in terms of a minimum amount of reserves as a proportion of our general fund or something that you've referenced. What's the gap between what we're at and where we're at? And Katie, forgive me, I didn't mean only to address that to Tina, but I associate it with Tina in my head, so forgive me. And and the reason I bring that up is just because it would be good to know what that gap is in the context of this whole budget. And in the context of any non-structural allocations that we would need to make, again emphasizing on structural. I just give those reactions because there's stuff I don't want to forget. But it's quite apparent how much work you've put into this. I do appreciate the form that you're working on. Because what we've heard in the past is commissioners, if you want to make amendments, you've got to identify where the money is is coming from. And having done that on the fly in the past, having a sensible idea where that money should come from. Rather than say, let's not pay an electricity bill or so, you know, that sort of thing. That that is helpful. I really appreciate it. I also know candidly that you're responding to a million different requests. You're trying to both respond to policy needs and what is a process that is rational for you to use on a day in, day out basis. So it's incredibly hard job. I appreciate all the effort you put into it. Thanks, Chair.
Oh, we can get you that number. I don't have it. Do you have it, Tim?
It'll be 783,000, but there will be a pending closed session with regard to a few pending liabilities that will be shared. They were shared with board leadership during the broad budget briefing, but look for that information at future date that we're trying to prepare for.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott.
Thank you, Chair. I I don't know if you're going to be able to answer that or Michelle, if you're going to be able to answer this. But I'm interested in that additional position for labor attorney. When we just did the contract, one of the discussions on salary was about additional duties that Corporation Council took on, including labor relations. But now I see a whole nother attorney being hired. So I'm wondering. I'm wondering about that, if I could get more clarity on that.
Otherwise, I'm going to turn it over to Greg also, but I can't.
So when I inherited labor relations, it didn't come with any additional resources. And recently, a great deal of our labor relations institutional knowledge has departed with some very high-level retirements. And so because of that, labor relations itself just requires a lot more support than it has historically. And we're also looking at bargaining much more frequently. We are leaving 10-year contracts. I don't think anyone has an interest in a 10-year contract, the unions or the employer. So we are going to be bargaining at a much more regular pace. And we also do spend a great deal of money on outside council fees for arbitrations. And trickier labor relations questions that might require the expertise of someone who specializes in labor relations. So we are hoping that by having a labor relations attorney in-house. We will cut down on a lot of those outside council fees and have an additional person who can provide much more support. I will still be involved in labor relations and overseeing a great deal of the direction of it. But given the amount of time that it is recently required of me. I also have challenges focusing on my other Corporation Council duties. So we're trying to do what's best for the organization and adding a labor relations attorney.
All right, thank you. That helps me understand some of that. I still remain a little bit concerned just because the entire discussion on the last contract was about the the labor relations was a big part of your job that was part of that raise. So I might have more questions on that. Thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions at this time? All right. Well, thank you so much for the presentation. I echo Commissioner LaBar's comments around the nutritional programs, especially given what we've heard recently during public comment from our partners about changes in federal support. So thank you so much.
I still have more.
Oh, we're only halfway through.
We're halfway through. Okay, I just didn't want to come at you with 43 slides and questions because
I get it. We took a break. We need to rest. All right.
So I did a quick overview of the general fund, but I wanted to make sure since we do have a significant number of resources in non-general funds. That really show the picture of county operations as a whole, I wanted to show the full governmental fund budget. Again, our revenues, if you include all of our grant programs, our state-funded programs are about 400, $400 million. And again, this grows over time. Again, you see the impact of not just the mental health and public safety millage expiring. But other millages as they expire, we're going to see the drop come down, including veterans and roads and their expiration dates. Looking at governmental funds by category, unlike when we're just looking at the general fund picture. We see that federal, state, and local revenues are actually the highest revenue that we revenue source that we receive in the county. With taxes and penalties being the second highest category. Fees and services make up a small amount and then everything else is a very small picture compared to what we receive in those intergovernmental revenues. On the expenditure standpoint, you can see personal services keep growing. When you see that drop in 2027, it is again tied to those expiring millages. You're not planning on reducing personnel costs. We anticipate them growing year over year. Programming and operations is almost equal to personal services when you take all governmental funds as a whole. And then looking by service area, again, it presents a different picture than when we just look at the general fund. And we see that health and human services is our largest set of a group of funding. A lot of that has to do with CMH and all the federal revenue that comes into CMH. And then public safety and justice is our second largest. On the other service areas are much smaller. Again, we see general government is negative. That ties back to the cap expense credit. And I wanted to give a quick picture. There's a lot of data on the slide. Sorry for that. If you are processing, you're going to have questions afterwards. I'm totally available at any point in time. But wanted to give a highlight of each service area group, both general fund and all funds, providing that picture. For health and human services, the largest appropriation is the health appropriation. That has, that covers our medical examiner as well as our health MOE are the two biggest chunks of that appropriation. And then CMH is the next largest goes down from there. The human services is the new human services partnership that replaced coordinated funding. And then OCD, the OCD appropriation goes to be spread out among a number of grants as well as provide administrative costs. One thing that is a little bit new, again, I mentioned there's a program we had to move out of the non-general fund into the general fund. So economic development and agriculture will be moved in as a general fund or because it was only funded by transfers in from the general funds, we had to bring it back in. So that will look a little bit different than previous years. Again, when we look at all funds, you can see that CMH by far the largest expenditure source at over 135 million. Grows over time until the mental health and public safety. Sorry, I have to keep saying that. Just don't want anybody to worry when they see the drop in 2027. But we see OCD and health remain relatively stable at around 21 million for OCD. And then 20, around 20 million for health that grows to 21.1 by 2027. The other health and human services departments include that, which also has a village that expires this one in 2025. So it shows zero as 26 and 27. We know conversations are still ongoing. So until we know the direction of that department, we'll keep that budgeted at zero. But we'll be bringing another budget to you all before that. Do you have a question?
Yeah, two question while we're on this.
Yeah.
So all the way to the left, the chart that shows the human, so OCD and then human services appropriation. Is the human services appropriation that's just for new human services partnership?
Yes.
Is there a way to get a breakdown from both of those OCD appropriation and the human services appropriation? How much is actually used on housing-related services? Or is allocated to be
We could look, we can see what we can look at.
I think it comes, it goes from the general fund into OSED fund. So OSED would probably have to weigh in on that exactly.
Okay, I guess I'm like, yeah, thank you so much. Oh, and Commissioner LaBar.
Thanks, Chair. Andy is just fine, too. Do not worry. On that graph on the left, it would also be helpful to see how much of those general fund expenditures under CMH and health are maintenance of effort. Because I think it's easy to forget that a big portion of that number is required federal match to leverage other dollars. And so having that in the context of do we, what do we do with our general fund allocation to those departments and others? That'd be really useful just to have on hand here to 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 sort of not forget that some of that is literally to to maintain the ability to leverage outside dollars. Thanks.
We can get you those breakdowns. We have that. It is the majority, as you said, I'll say that, because I don't have the dollars right at hand, but the majority does go to meet those obligations. And then just on that chart on the right, just looking at the breakdown of both expenses and revenues. Unlike a number of other service areas, health and human services is really have more heavily weighted toward programming and operations. That has to do a lot with how we deliver those services to the clients that are receiving them. They're about 55% is programming and operations, and then personal services is only 39%. Personal services would only represent direct county staff. The, on the revenue side, again, we see that big impact from the federal revenues. It's primarily driven by Medicaid dollars from CMH as well as other federal grant programs that run through the other departments, including health and OCD. And then also just to show a picture of this, that of the revenue going toward health and human services, only about 8% is net transfers, which is general fund transfers in to support those programs. Get a public safety and justice. Wanted to call out contract policing because I know that's when we're always looking for what that impact is. So you should, you see the budget over time. 2027 estimates an increase in PSU revenues in alignment with the trends of the contract. But no price has been set and we're not stating that a price should be set. We're just trying to plan for the future. That gap between revenues and expenditures is currently being funded by the mental health and public safety knowledge. So if the mileage goes away, then we have a gap issue there that has to be addressed. Do you have a question? Sorry, I was staring at the chart. Commissioner Hatch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for presenting the information in this way. I think we've talked about this a few times where this, when we get to the public safety and justice section or when anybody looks at the budget. I think most people turn to that and look at it and think, oh, that's such a large portion of the general fund and it's all going to policing, which isn't accurate. So I know that when we've talked about this quite a bit over the, over the years. And I think this is a much better way to represent it. So you look at it and you see that, oh, it goes to things like the prosecuting attorney, which includes things like the conviction integrity and expendment unit. And the economic justice unit or the courts and all those other items besides just policing. And and then you also broke out the contract leasing piece, too, which is, I think I asked you to do that last time and it's looking really good. So I just So I just wanted to thank you for it.
Tried to not make you request the same thing, Mo. I will say also, as that kind of leads into the pie chart on the other side, the sheriff's office is also listed all as one department. That does not just mean policing. That includes corrections. That includes emergency management. That includes dispatch, which are other services provided that are beyond just policing as well. That is one of the things that we're excited about is keep building out this program budgeting approach is really being able to have all that information on how much is going to which area instead of just seeing the big bucket that's harder to see. Yeah, so we see, Sheriff's about 30%, trial court's 18%. This is across funds, not just general funds. Contract policing represents 12% of Public Safety and Justice expenditures. So it's actually a big chunk, even if I'm trying to look at all funds. So it is a big program that is run. On the expenditure trends, again, we see personnel is by far the largest expenditure, and that drop is tied back to the millage. On Support Services, when it talks governmental funds, we don't include internal service funds because we don't want to double count expenditures that departments are paying for from the cap. So if you try to start mapping out all of the numbers, it will not quite tie up. So if we have questions on that front, we can always get them out to you. I wanted to include them here because otherwise it looks like we spend no money on risk or facilities, which is not true in this organization. We are doing a lot to support the operations of all of the other departments. On the general fund, IT is the largest expenditure. The other remaining, finance is the next largest. And then we have capital appropriations that go to IT and both facilities, funds to plan for future project needs and larger capital expenditures. Looking at all funds by category, again, this is another place where we see programming and operations is much higher than personnel services. And this ties back to the type of work that the departments here do, especially IT and facilities, hardware, software maintenance, et cetera, keeping the lights on in the buildings, et cetera, are not tied back to FT, but are things that need to happen to keep the organization running and able to do the services that we do. On the revenue side, their largest revenue is other revenue and reimbursements. Usually is tied to like local agreements and providing services. There's a small amount for taxes. That's the accommodation ordinance tax. It seems weird to have taxes for support services, but it's tied to finance. So that's how it's reflected here. When we look at the department breakdown, we see that facilities is 32% of total support services operations. IT is 24%, 24.5%. The accommodation ordinance tax actually makes up a big chunk at 14%. And then it goes down from their finance to risk. The risk management does include what it would be with that appropriation to build out that fund balance. So it is reflected a little bit higher than we normally would see. The land use and environment, when we're talking general fund, we're primarily looking at water resources. They are the largest component of the general fund expenditures. County MSU extension, our contract with them to provide educational services. So the general fund is the other component. Across the organization, though, across all funds, Parks is the biggest operator in this service area group. They're 75% of expenditures and revenues. And in general, this service area is pretty stable. Like, things aren't really changing a lot over time. A lot of it is kind of nuts and bolts and things that we tend to do every single year. So there's not a lot of growth or expansion here. The civic infrastructure service area, these departments are primarily general fund. The treasurer, clerk, and equalization departments all have a small amount of non-general fund activity, but by and large, their activity is happening in the general fund. They're also largely, the expenditures are on personal services. This is, again, they're dependent on staff that are providing services, recording deeds, et cetera, to, or for the community. Revenue, 88% is fees and services. This is the clerk revenue. The impact of that transfers in is some appropriations to non-general fund programs, and then a small amount of licenses and permits and other revenues. And then lastly, the legislative and general government. This is when I was talking about the BOC priority org. One of the things that this does, we're used to legislative just being the cost of the commission, being small, being stable. And this really brings priorities more highlighted under that function, which is helps them stand out as opposed to when they're grouped in with other things happening in general government. We do see that programming and operations is the largest expenditure. Again, that's tied back to those board priority allocations I went through in the recommendations. And then we see personal services growing with the change in compensation that's coming in 2025, but it remains the same for 2024. And then general government. And this is a little less exciting. It is what it is. We have the cap credit and then some other organizational expenses that are supporting everything that is happening. Personal services are reserves we have in place for future compensation implementation. It's not tied to actual specific staff. As we operationalize them, we will move them out of general government and into the relevant departments. Any questions on service areas? Otherwise, I have the much anticipated board request form. So we know. Okay. Ready for them? Okay. So we promised to launch a BOC budget adjustment request process trying to build off of things we have tried and done in the past few years to really help provide a structured way to present budget amendments and have them be considered and planned out instead of trying to figure them out on the fly on the board floor. So we laid out a timeframe back in September. So this is just a reminder of that timeframe. So tonight, I'm going to demonstrate the form. It provides four weeks to develop requests until that first reading. I will highlight potential funding sources as requested by Commissioner LaBarre. At the next meeting, when I'm here for a working session on the budget request process, we'll definitely have time for a check-in on any questions you all might have that we need to address, making sure we don't leave it hanging until November 1st. When we receive requests, the plan is on November 1st, we're going to present them and have a working session to really talk through what adjustments you all are wanting to make to the budget, what makes sense from your standpoint. That board meeting would provide the opportunity to formally present any amendments during the first reading process. And then November 15th would have another opportunity to present any amendments during the final reading. The targeted potential funding sources. So these are listed in easiest to most difficult to operationalize. So focusing first on the undesignated allocations, these are resources set aside for you all to allocate to your purposes. So that's the easiest pot of money because it's reserved for you to make priority allocations out of. The next one are the newly recommended allocations for housing and homelessness and the Eastside Recreation Community Center. The reason I listed these out is when we were developing a budget recommendation, it's really, we knew these were priority areas, and so the recommendation of administrator deal was just divide them in half and put half into each bucket. So it's not tied to anything scientific necessarily, but we know that we need resources for these priorities. But if we, there are other competing priorities. There's both structural and non-structural resources available there. And then the last bucket would be any other recommended budget recommendations that I went through earlier. So there's structural of the 2.1 million and then non-structural, 3.7 in 2024 and 2.4 in 25 and 27. To do these, we have to say no to something else that's recommended. So we want to highlight that piece of the puzzle where that is lower down on the list. So this slide is mostly for information for you all. If you're looking at this after the meeting, I will send you an email with the link to the form tonight. But to do the budget request process, fingers crossed this is going to work. So. Now it's going to load for a minute. So we set up a Microsoft form for you all to fill out. Is that more legible? Okay. The first thing that is being asked is the name of the request. So. BOC request. It doesn't have to be super descriptive just so that we can identify, keep it separate from others. All the requests we receive will be dumped into a spreadsheet and let us use them. So we want to make sure it's something that means something to you all, but it doesn't have to be super long. The next item is the description of the request. Again, looking for a couple of sentences just to make sure we have talking points of what the request will do. The type of request, the definition of each type is on the presentation. A new program is something we haven't done before. So we're trying to set up a new initiative, et cetera. If it's an existing program that you think we should direct more resources at, that would be a program modification. And if it's one-time dollars, then we're talking non-structural. As we scroll through, we'll ask for each year's amount, especially if it's structural, to know if we're talking staff costs and to grow. If you're struggling to estimate, that's what Ashley and I are here for, to help provide good estimates. Or as a starting point, if you just want to estimate, we can talk through and refine it at a later date. Which is why it says estimates are okay. So it doesn't have to be the most exact dollar amount. We will have time in the process to clarify that. Another thing we're asking on the board form is similar to what we asked for departments. We wanted to be able to try to keep requests on a level playing field with those we receive from the department. So we're looking for just a couple of sentences on any impact on the climate action plan, any potential impact on equity, as well as impact on building a safe and healthy community. And again, we're not looking for paragraphs, just a couple of sentences of where you are, what we're trying, what impact we're trying to make with this allocation. The last, sorry, second to last question looks at where we want the funding from the request to come from. This is a drag and drop feature, so you can move them around and put them in a priority order. So we recognize if we get a number of requests, not everything may be able to be funded by the undesignated allocation. Maybe not. We can maybe fund it all. That'd be great. It'd be a much easier amendment process. I'll support that. But the, so that we have the priority order, so we can really have a fulsome discussion when we do that working session in November. If the recommendation or the pot of money that you feel like should be the biggest funding source for it is the other structural general fund recommendation or the other non-structural general fund, it's our other non-structural general fund recommendations. I did put a request in here of just which one do you think we should take it from? It's a big bucket of recommendations, but they're all laid out on the presentation. So however laid out is how we can identify them. Once you fill that out, you hit submit, and we get an email that you submitted a request and it fills it all out. So that is the request form. And with that, I'm open for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Light?
In this request form, it's going to be active after?
It's technically active now, but you all don't have the link yet, so I will send it out after this.
Commissioner Scott?
Thank you, Chair. Kate, thanks. If there's an existing program that has never been funded by this board, is that new program or?
Do you have an example in mind or?
Yeah, I mentioned this in the last meeting when we talked about our Homeland Security and Tactical Response Team. That's, they've never been funded by us. But they're out there and we're expecting them to do work and save us in emergencies.
Yeah, I think that would meet the request of a new, new program.
Okay. Yeah. Kind of thinking about box.
Yes. And really, the box is just informational. So like, don't spend too much time overthinking it either. You're not going to like get it wrong. It's just to help us further the discussion.
You really just asked me not to overthink something.
I understand.
I will try.
Have to fill out something. I'm like, which boxes is a ball into?
Well, it's a really great form, and I appreciate the work you've done on it, and I think it will yield some interesting discussions.
I hope so. That's the goal.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, now I'm officially done.
Great. All right. I don't think we have any items for future current discussions. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners Meeting, October 4th. It's showtime here. Our friends will be joining us in a moment, but we will get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we are joined back by Bryce. Bryce, good to have you back.
Thank you, Chair.
You want to get us started with roll call?
Love to.
All right.
Commissioner Beeman.
Present.
Commissioner Hodge.
Here.
Commissioner LaBarre. Commissioner Light.
Present.
Commissioner Machieski.
Here.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders.
Here.
Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Somerville.
Here.
All right, I'll take this moment to share that Commissioner Robbie has COVID but is recovering well. That's why he's not here with us today. He is watching, I expect. Hey, Commissioner Robbie, he might give public comment during the public comment phase. We wish him a speedy recovery. I know it's a very, it's a difficult thing to miss a meeting like this because we do have such a good time. All right, well, now we will move into public participation. So here at the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners Meeting, you get three minutes for public comment. If you are in the room, you will join us at the podium and you will state your name and where you live. You can just tell us the city or township. And then from there, you have three minutes to speak. We have a nice color-coded system that starts green, goes down to yellow, and you got one minute left, and then we get to red, and at red, you're at your time, and I got to stop you. I don't want to have to stop you, so just let's be conscious of the time and then we'll cut you off. Also, please remember to say your name and where you live, otherwise I'm going to have to ask you to do that at the end, and I don't want to do that either. It gets a little awkward. If you're joining us online via Zoom, you have a couple of ways that you could participate. If you are on Zoom through the web client, you'll hit the raise hand icon. I will call on you. You will state your name. You will state where you live because the same rules apply. You get your three minutes. We have the color, or we don't have a color-coded thing if you're on Zoom, but we have the, yup, we'll have a stopwatch on there. If you're joining us via Zoom by phone, you will hit star nine to raise your hand. I will call on you. You will hit star six to unmute yourself. You will state your name and where you live, and then you will give your public comment. I usually forget to say this, but I remember this time, if you are new to a meeting like this, the way the agenda is structured is we don't respond right back to you immediately. Now, we would like to in many cases, but we can't. So everyone will give public comment. We will listen to your public comments, and then we will respond after that. A couple of other things I would share in addition to us not being joined by Commissioner Robbie, you will see that the seat next to me, if the camera will point at it. Maybe not, where Administrator Dill would be sitting. He is not here with us, but he is online, and you should be able to see him. There you go. The chair is empty, and that is my scooter. Still recovering, one more. This is the last meeting before I'm walking without the scooter. Administrator Dill is with us. He's away at a conference, so he is still, will still be able to participate with us. So thank you for doing that, taking time away. Great. All right. Would anybody in the room like to give public comment? Please come on down.
My name is Marie Gress. I'm from Myla, Michigan. I ask that you untable the ARPA Senior Fund proposal and approve the recommended spend. As a resident, aging sector professional, social work educator, and Commission on Aging member, the discussion on September 20 about this item was alarming. Commissioner Sanders, your comments on employee pay villainizes the agencies and professionals providing these critical services. The reality is the majority of these staff work full-time to make what you do part-time in this role. Commissioner LaBarre, you asked if seniors were included in this process. In 2021, the Commission on Aging created the ARPA Subcommittee with seniors and aging services professionals, and in 2022, we requested eight million in ARPA funding as well as continued involvement in the process. The Board of Commissioners agreed to afford million and chose to maintain the same RFP and decision-making process as all of your other ARPA spends. So I ask if you involved any Commission on Aging members or seniors in your decision-making process before last meeting. Commissioner Scott, while the physical locations of these agencies may not be representative of all county addresses, the majority of applicants serve countywide. Regardless, the RFP pros, or the RFP focused on 48197 and 98, so the agencies focus their ask on those zip codes, which was in the materials for you during last meeting. Commissioner Somerville, I'm disappointed that as our liaison with the Commission on Aging, you asked us about Phoenix Mobility. We educated you. We expressed our support, and yet you brought none of that advocacy forward when your peers questioned Phoenix's legitimacy. Commissioner Beeman, as a resident of your district and your representative on the Commission on Aging, you have not responded to my request to meet prior to last session nor since last session. Commissioner Robbie, I hope you learned how to open your packet and you were able to read the proposals. These agencies worked hard to prepare, and your staff spent a lot of time preparing for you. In closing, the Board of Commissioners has distributed nearly 50 million in ARPA funds, and the time to reinvent the RFP process is not when we are near the final four million distributing to older adults. The process was not perfect, but it was followed by your team and by the agencies who applied. The dollars they asked for were thoughtful of their needs, capacity, and ARPA restrictions, and you should have reached out to them. No one in our circles expected you to be experts in the proposals, but we did expect you to come prepared and informed, and we had hoped for your support. The, to table this item with the intent of passively killing it is unacceptable. Washtenaw County earmarks no other dollars for aging services. Please untable and approve the ARPA Senior Funds tonight.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come give public comment? Come on down.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Yachek, and I live in the city of Ann Arbor. I am here to represent Phoenix Mobility Rising. I am the Community Development Manager for Washtenaw County, and I know that some of you had questions two weeks ago regarding RFP number 8485. So I'd like to start by asking you all a question. How did you get here tonight? Did you drive or take a bus or walk or, you know, carpool? Because to be here physically in this room tonight is a privilege. We take for granted the access and independence that comes with car ownership or living in a walkable community or having viable public transportation options or even having a social network that can drive you without sacrificing their time and well-being. I want you to see the people who are in the room tonight, but also recognize the individuals who aren't here tonight because they simply did not have the means to get here. I am here for them. I am sure that many of you have seen buses, the branded vehicles, or the list and Ubers that roam the streets, but you do not see the individual who doesn't have access to a vehicle, who stopped driving, who cannot afford a ride share, or is not able to walk or move from the bus stop down the street to this building to be here tonight. Phoenix Mobility Rising focuses on solving transportation gaps in the communities we serve. We do not show up and do our work without community partners staring, stating there is a need to address. We have been working in the community for the past five years on a variety of projects, and at the heart of it, we've been providing transportation to people in need. Since 2020, we have powered the ARP Ride at 50+ Program, which has only highlighted the need for reliable transportation that goes beyond geographic boundaries our public options have. There are great options available, but they are not currently connected in such a way that a rider can search for, book, and secure their trip in one place. Free, Phoenix brings that capability. I cannot go into all the logistics of our program without going far over Myla a lot of time because it would be all night, but I wouldn't be here today without the positive community reception and support from our partners and the people who are not in the room. The proposal Phoenix submitted is backed by both national and local findings, and the time is now to bring a more comprehensive transportation solution that mitigates the effects COVID has had on older adults accessing food, healthcare, and housing. Data has shown health implications from the reduced access to transportation from COVID has led to an increase in morbidity, morbidity and mortality with non-COVID illnesses as well as increased sedentary lifestyle, malnutrition, and general health decline. This project is critical. I want you to take this seriously. Please approve this funding for all of the programs. If you have any questions about Phoenix, I will be here to answer them to the best of my ability. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can you state where you live? Sorry, you missed that part.
City of Ann Arbor.
City of Ann Arbor. All right, gotcha. Thank you. Anybody else? Public comment? Come on down.
Good evening. I'm not going to have to talk quite as fast here. I have just a minor comment to make. I would like to, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening, and I would like to also thank you for the careful consideration that you have been giving, given to the distribution of the ARPA funds to support the older adults in Washtenaw County, which is the reason that I'm here talking to you this evening. My name is Jim Carson. I am the President of the Dexter Senior Center, and I have the distinction of being one of the older adults in Washtenaw County, and I'm proud to be here to talk to you today. The Dexter Senior Center is facing an urgent challenge of securing a new location due to the end of our current lease. Our request for ARPA funding to the county is to construct and furnish an age-friendly hub for our senior nutrition program, our Meals on Wheels program, and our other healthy living program and services within the proposed Dexter Multi-Generational Community Center. While $8.5 million have already been awarded to the Dexter community to buy, renovate, and construct the community center, which will house our senior nutrition program and our services, significant additional funds are still needed for the project as we told in the proposal that we submitted to the county. Time is of the essence for us to get our project started. So on behalf of the Dexter Senior Center Board, on behalf of our staff, and actually on behalf of the older adults in the Dexter community, we urge you to act on and vote yes tonight on the current slate of proposals for the ARPA funding. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't want to assume you live in Dexter, but.
Oh, yes, I do.
Okay.
You want my address? No, okay. I live, yes, I do live in Dexter.
You live in Dexter, Bryce?
Thank you.
And your name again, sorry.
Jim Carson.
He got it. Okay, the first thing. Just had to be sure.
Thank you.
Got to have a good record here. All right. Anybody else for public comment?
Hello again. Hello Riley, Executive Director. It's Chelsea Senior Center. I'm also a resident of Chelsea. Appreciate this opportunity to speak to you again. I want to first to address something I said at the last session in terms of the employees. We have eight employees. Three of us are full-time, five half-time. None of us receive any benefits whatsoever. You know, retirement benefits, no medical, dental. The only thing we get is paid time off. So there's no slush fund going here to benefit employees. We did put some things in there for bringing on people who could do some community outreach, and that is all it was in terms of employees. I also want to remind you, as stated in our application, Washtenaw County has a senior population 65 and older that is 15.9%. In Dex, I'm sorry, in Chelsea, it's exactly double that. We are at 30.8% of our population is 65 and older. There's a critical need to provide these services. As I state, as I stated earlier, we do not receive anything from Washtenaw County other than for the Meals on Wheels, and we receive less than 10% of our funding from other governmental resources. So these funds are very critical to us. Frankly, we wouldn't have asked for them if we didn't need them. So really ask that you reconsider your, you vote on this and move things forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Come on down.
Evening again. My name is Ryan Hunter, and I am a resident of Ipsa Township, but I'm here representing Jewish Family Services of Washtenaw County, which is located in Ann Arbor. And it is my privilege and honor to represent Jewish Family Services. Our agency has faithfully served the local community for nearly 30 years, and we are widely recognized for providing essential support services to vulnerable local community members and newly resettled people from all around the world. Critically, we provide a wide range of support services to diverse older adults across the county. Our Wise Aging and Nutrition Services improve the health and well-being of seniors and caregivers by providing critical safety net assistance throughout the entirety of Washtenaw County. In 2022, 38% of our older adult clients resided within the ARPA priority areas of 48197 and 48198 zip codes. 60% of JFS Nutrition Services benefited residents within those zip codes. The balance of our clients are living within low-income areas across the county in remote rural areas and in subsidized housing not far from where we're standing right now. Notably, in 2022, 71% of Wise Aging clients reported an annual income of $25,000 or less. Due to resource scarcity, the effects of COVID-19, rising costs, and a growing aging population, we will no longer be able to maintain critical aging services without adequate funding. ARPA funding offers hope that we can continue doing the work. The Board of Commissioners has wisely allocated 3.8 million of ARPA dollars to support vulnerable seniors. So unevenly impacted by the blights of COVID, the funds recommended for JFS will immediately be applied to providing safety net services throughout the entire county, including an increase of capacity to serve arguably the most marginalized seniors via a satellite office located in 48198. Across this great county, there are agencies providing services to seniors who have made an incredible impact in their lives. At the board's last meeting, many of you expressed a desire to learn more about the work of the community-based, more, excuse me, community-based senior services sector. At JFS, we welcome your interest. Please come see us, sincerely, please come see us. I'd be glad to meet with each one of you. Our doors are open, and we will meet with you at your convenience. We hope that during the past two weeks, your questions and concerns regarding ARPA recommendations have been adequately addressed. We appreciate your due diligence and hope that it will lead to you, lead you to untable this item tonight and vote yes on the recommended slate of funding. Like you, we like to serve as good stewards of these valuable pub, public dollars. Please help us serve those who have a need and vote yes. Allow our agency to continue doing the work we are already doing. Thank you.
All right, right on the dot there. All right. Anybody else for public comment? Come on down.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Lemon. I'm a resident of Dexter. I also serve as Vice President of Community Investment at the Ann Arbor Area Community Foundation. I'm here tonight to show my support for the process that the county has laid out in the distribution of these dollars to support older adults in our community. I applaud the decision to allocate such a large amount of funding to support older adults. And it's also my hope that there will be a decision to move these, this funding decision forward. I can tell you that through our 60 years of existence as a funder in our community that the dollars to support older adult supportive services is not sufficient. Funding isn't the only solution that is necessary, but it is absolutely one of those factors which needs to be addressed. I can also say through years of experience that the decision-making process is not always an easy one. And what I would like to extend is an offer is that should there ever be another opportunity for this body to review applications to support our community and the nonprofits to do the good work, we literally are right across the street from you right here. This is what we do every day. And so one of the things that we own is that no one body or organization can truly support our community. It does require a multi-sector approach. So if you ever have questions about the nonprofits, our experiences, our understandings of what are happening in our community, we have a perspective. It is not the only perspective, but we want to be able to support you in any processes that you have moving forward. So like I said, it's my hope that you will move forward with the funding decisions tonight, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room for public comment? Hi.
Hi. I'm D. Corrath. I live at 1518 Gilbert Court, Escher Housing Cooperative. And I'm a patient and a custodian at Community Mental Health. I've moved back and forth between my parents' place in Manchester and here in Ann Arbor as I've gained and lost jobs. I'm on my second application for SSI. If I don't get it, I'll probably have to leave Ann Arbor for good for, go back to Manchester. My mental health has been doing a lot better since living in Ann Arbor. But I'm being priced out, even if I do get SSI, even though I'm living in one of the most affordable options in Ann Arbor, a housing cooperative, the cost of living keeps going up, and, and so rent goes up even there. I mentioned I'm going to be priced out. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else like to give public comment?
Hello, my name is Brian Coburn. I live in the city of Ann Arbor. I have been to the past few county commissioner meetings and understand that you guys are plan to roll out a housing proposal in two weeks. And before that is done, I wanted to strongly, strongly suggest, demand that the county purchase a property that is long overdue for, in the city of Ypsilanti, for homeless residents. The Delana Center is not adequate as the county's only true housing shelter. We suggest that you purchase 10 South Prospect in Ypsilanti for only $300,000. This is a space with almost 500,000 square, almost 5,000 square feet, and we could introduce you to a network of grassroots activists who would be totally willing to volunteer this winter because the massive increase in homelessness in the county cannot afford another winter. So please, please make that a part of your plan, October 18th, to purchase 10 South Prospect in Ypsilanti for $300,000.
All right, thank you. Anybody else for public comment in the room?
Hi, my name is Noah Dollar. I live in Northfield Township. I saw there was nothing on the agenda specifically about cold weather sheltering, but I know last time y'all met, there was a presentation of data. I just want to add to what the person before me said. Options for sheltering, Beal owns over 60 vacant units. That location that was mentioned, 10 South Prospect, that's still available. It's only $300,000. If the county were to purchase that, there are volunteers that would be willing to run that, at least in the short term, to get us through the winter. Winter is coming. Temperatures are dropping, maybe faster even than some people expected. One other thing I wanted to add was on the presentation of data last time, a count was brought up, the pit count, and there were some concerns that were brought up during the presentation about the accuracy of the data because the count is done during winter. So obviously, visible homelessness is not going to be as high. I also just want to add, there are, even if you were to take that count during the summer, there are lots of problems with doing a count like that. There are people that are unhoused that camp way out. It's, it's hard to find those camps. You wouldn't be able to do that with a pit count. There are people sleeping in their cars. It would be hard. There are people sleeping in their cars. It would be hard to know exactly who's sleeping in their car, who's actually homeless or not. So lots of problems with the pit count. Um, I think that it under-represents, um, how bad the issue is getting with unhoused in the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the, oh, there you go. You were quick.
Hi, I'm Deanna Smith and I live in the city of Celine. I would strongly urge you to untable and approve the resolution recommending funding for older adult services with the previously allocated three point eight million of ARPA funding. Thank you.
Short and sweet. All right, anybody else for public comment in the room?
Good evening. I'm Alison Forman. I'm, uh, the CEO at Ypsilanti Meals on Wheels and I live in Ypsilanti Township. I'm here to ask the county commissioners to take action today to untable and approve the allocations of fundings that have been earmarked for older adult services that was approved in a resolution in May of twenty twenty-two. I've come before you many times to share the growing demand for social services for our older adults in Ypsie and across our entire community. We, the aging sector, work collaboratively across the county to support older adults through their active years at senior centers to post hospitalizations in their homes. The statistics have been shared that one in four residents in Washington County will be over the age of sixty in just over six years. Many will need nutrition services, case management, home modifications, access to health services beyond four walls of the hospitals, and supportive services to relieve social isolation such as pet care, friendly visits, and friendly walking programs. And these are just a few of the programs to list that we know will grow over the years to ensure older adults can remain in the communities they love. While I could share the wonderful work of my agency does, I also want to encourage everyone and to understand, we as partners work together and everyone who is listed for funding shares client clients in common, and we all work to fulfill those clients' needs. I would rather share today, rather than my own testimony, the testimony of my clients that we visit every day and the value they see of the services of the aging sector. Every October, Meals on Wheels Agencies share the opportunity for Meals on Wheels clients to provide their opinion of our services and what those messages and their services mean to them. So I've shared, uh, placed some of those, uh, messages with you guys, but here are a few others. So one of the clients has told us, I'm not able to get to the grocery store. At times, I'm too tired to cook as I am the caregiver for my husband who has prostate cancer and also dementia, and he can be quite a handful at times. Meals on Wheels helps me maintain my health so I can be present for him. Thank you. For you, another quote is, you folks took good care of my mother when she was alive and you have seen to my needs as well, both when she was alive and since she passed away. I appreciate your service for both the food and the kind and caring people who deliver it. I appreciate that the staff and volunteers check on me and when they come, they smile and they ensure that I'm safe and well. I want you to know, living disabled alone and in poverty is hard, and it's good to know that people will come and help if help is needed. Lastly, Verdi, who her daughter-in-law and son have received services with their mother with us, sent us an appreciative message that once their Care on Wheels team was done with the services of occupational therapy, nursing, and home modification, they felt blessed that their whole family learned about assistive assess, assistive education and safety training on the new devices. And they felt that this enhanced the older person's life. I urge you on behalf of people like Verdi and her family to untable this and vote yes to support aging services. Thank you.
Perfectly timed. Thank you. And I do appreciate a good problem. Who's next for public comment? Come on down.
You're probably all sick of seeing me. I'm Monica Prince and I live in Ypsie Township and I am the Director at the Ypsilanti Senior Center. And I just want to say ditto to everything that's been said today. This money has been on hold for so long and it is desperately needed to get to the people that need this money. Yes, my, um, the S- Ypsie Senior Center is planning on using some of it for staffing. Right now, I am the only full-time staff. I have two part-time staff. Although one of my part-time staff has been in the hospital for about three weeks. Um, and so we, we are very small in staff and we have never been able to provide any sorts of benefits for any of our staff members. Um, and granted, I would like to someday be able to retire. And right now, I can't find anyone on the money that we have to give to someone to work full-time and eventually take over my position because no one wants to work for forty thousand dollars with no benefits. Um, and that's the top of our salaries. And, but another thing I just want to say is we need this money as a stopgap measure, but we also need some sustainable funding. Um, right now, the only funding that this Ypsie Senior Center gets is six thousand dollars from the city. And that pays for our utilities, basically, or part of our utilities, actually. Um, so it, it's like we're constantly, we spend up so much time trying to dig up money that we'd really like to be able to just get ahead a little bit so that we could offer a good place for people to come and, um, get the things, they have the programmings, the, uh, get out of their homes and get to meet people so that there isn't the soc- social isolation that is prevalent in our county. Thank you.
Thank you. About us in the room for public comment?
Good evening, everyone, both here and via Zoom. Um, I'm Eileen Spring and I live in Commissioner Scott's district. I'm speaking on behalf of Food Gatherers. We were grateful to have been recommended for funding to support older adults in our county as our previous applications to access ARPA money have not been approved. Unless you make a direct allocation to us, this is likely Food Gatherer's last chance to receive funding from this pot of funds. The ARPA dollars are federal dollars you have and have had for quite some time. And these dollars are intended to help mitigate the ongoing effects of the pandemic in Washington County. As I've shared with many of you, more people, your constituents, are accessing food pantries now than during the height of the pandemic. The need is so acute now because pretty much all of the federal pandemic-related increases in support have ended at the same time that costs for food are at a record high due to inflation. This includes direct assistance to individuals receiving SNAP. There's also been a decline in federal food that goes to food banks like Food Gatherers, forcing us to purchase more food at higher costs to meet this need. Eighty-four percent of our grant requests is to pay for food and food-related supplies. It would support food distributions at nine senior housing sites in Ypsie and Ann Arbor and a food distribution at the VA and at eighty-three food pantries that are in each of your districts, serving ten thousand seniors throughout Washington County. As if things couldn't get worse, we are now dealing with the UAW strike and given yesterday's shenanigans and DCC, quite likely a government shutdown days before Thanksgiving. This will cause havoc for our vulnerable neighbors who will need to rely even more on the charitable network of pantries who rely on Food Gatherers. The concept of food security in the simplest terms means you are confident that you will have your, your next meal when you are hungry. Commissioners, you have the money, you have the power, and you have the opportunity to give that confidence to seniors in Washington County right now. Please do not lay, delay any longer in releasing these ARPA dollars to our community. We really need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room for public comment?
Hi, my name is Claudia Grace. I live at two one three South Hamilton Street. And I just came to stress the urgency of the homelessness situation. Um, not only is it about, winter is coming, it's getting colder, but also it's getting rainier. There's wind and those factors together create the conditions for hypothermia well before freezing temperatures. And I am aware that you guys are presenting your plan for housing on the eighteenth, but we need shelter now, like even just a temporary space where we can keep people until we have like a nicer, you know, uh, something with services. I don't know what you guys are planning, but we need something now that we can run, at least during the winter. We don't have time to wait for spring. Um, these are people's lives at stake. I know that in the past, the freight house has been used as a daytime warming center. We could potentially open that up for twenty-four-seven shelter just for the span of the winter while you guys get your housing planning together. And I'm sure like we could have a combination of different grassroots activists, people from churches who are extremely interested in this issue, who could staff this building. Um, a lot of people from the community have worked for the Weather AMC program, which previously hosted a daytime warming center there. They're very familiar with the building. Uh, and yeah, we just, we just, we need something now. We need something like last. So I just wanted to stress that instead of just like thinking about like, oh, we need a housing committee and like going through all the bureaucracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
My name is Cynthia Price and I live in Ann Arbor. Um, I've come before you, uh, several times before on the same subject and, um, will continue to. Um, we, um, the situation in Washington County, which is a wonderful county and, um, a compassionate county, um, is, um, bordering on, on, uh, a little bit of desperation. Um, uh, we, um, you know, a- as Noah pointed out, the point in time count, the pit count, um, I actually covered that for Ground Cover News and was present, and I know they did their best. Um, but it under-represents greatly the number of, of homeless people who were out there in the cold. Um, and, and it's, uh, you know, I mean, I'm s- I'm scared. I, I do participate in the, um, Weather Amnesty Program. I, I have been a, a strong volunteer and part of the, you know, planning and management, um, uh, this, the past, um, two years and, and again this year. Uh, but it, it's, it doesn't even put a dent in, in the number of people who need to be kept from hypothermia and kept from, uh, um, you know, from dying. I mean, you know, that's actually, that's literally what they face. And, um, so I, I would ask, you know, that, that I'm hoping that, uh, when the housing plan comes out next week, that that there is, um, or two weeks from now, that there, that there is a, a reflection that we need both, uh, an emergency shelter and we need more, um, long-term, um, housing care in the county. And we need services to help these people get on their feet. I have seen time and time again where just a little bit of services go a long way and, and people have been able to, to get on the right track. So I, I'm just, I beseech you, you know, to, to, um, pay attention to this very important issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room, public comment? Anybody else going once, twice? Three times. Okay, we're going to move on to our friends online. Ashley, do we have anybody online that would like to give public comment?
Do. Uh, first we have Ian Robinson.
Ian Robinson, please state your name and where you live.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, my name is Ian Robinson. I live in the city of Ann Arbor. Um, the president of Huron Valley Area Labor Federation, the AFL-CIO in our area, representing approximately twenty thousand union members in about fifty local unions. Um, I want to speak to you tonight about adequate staffing for the county's sustainability plan. Huron Valley Area Labor Federation and folks who are closely working with us have been participating in the development of the plan, have participated in that. And, uh, we've paid particular attention in that process to ensuring that the plan fully uh, includes just transition principles. And I would say that, you know, there's a lot of work to be done in terms of fleshing out what those principles mean in particular aspects of the plan. But overall, we've been very happy that the folks developing the plan for the county have been receptive and have made e- efforts to incorporate those kinds of concerns into the plan. And we've also been impressed, um, and by the ambitiousness of the plan, by its scope and by its, uh, the timing, the ambitious timeline. Um, I'm speaking to you tonight, though, because we're very concerned that the county doesn't really have the staff necessary to implement the plan in a timely fashion according to its own schedule. Um, it seems as though, uh, there are a, a lot of federal dollars with a fairly tight timeline that need to be applied for if we're going to get them. And if we do get them, we can move forward more quickly on a broader front than we'll be able to if we miss that opportunity. Um, so i- i- it's not just about trying to stick to the schedule. It's also about trying to get as much resources to fully implement this plan as possible. And to do that, we feel that, and this is really, we discussed this last night at our monthly delegate meeting. Roughly thirty delegates there at the meeting last night unanimously voted to send me to you with the request that you fund three full-time staff as soon as possible, preferably within the next six months, so that you have the resources needed to, to do what I, what I indicated, to, to stick to the timeline and to, as part of that, to make sure that we get the, the, the federal grants that we're eligible for, but which we won't get if we don't get that money in, those applications in, in a timely fashion. So that's, uh, that's my request to you. I know you're thinking about the budget at this point and we'll be deciding on it soon. I hope this can. Um, I hope you're able to act on this, uh, request on our part. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley, anybody else online?
Yes, we have Commissioner Yusuf Robby.
Commissioner Yusuf Robby. Well, you state your name and where you live.
Uh, hi, everybody. Uh, Yusuf Robby, I'm a resident of the city of Ann Arbor and boy, I wish my commissioner could be there tonight. Um, but I hear he has COVID. Uh, so yeah, sorry I couldn't be there with everybody. I was listening to the public comments and uh, I just wanted to respond to some of what the residents were saying. Um, in my public comment here, I know I have limited time as well. Um, you know, I think that the first thing I want to say is thank you to everybody that came tonight, uh, to speak. Um, to the first speaker, um, I do just want to say, uh, thank you for your, um, concern uh, about my, uh, opening of board packets. I will assure you that I have been able to open board packets since the beginning uh, of the year, which is when I started as a commissioner. Uh, and the issue that I was having the other night was scrolling through the two hundred and eighty-eight pages of our board packet to find the applicable, uh, page, uh, that I wanted to reference in my speech. Um, I believe I said that we should have, uh, links at the top to get us to those parts of the page. Uh, that is currently not available to the public. It should be. Um, and I still don't know how to access it as a commissioner. So, um, that was never shown to me. Uh, I did not know that existed until uh, Chair Hodge mentioned that it was an option. So I just want to clarify those comments and I do very much appreciate your concern um, for my, uh, you know, issue. So, uh, the other thing I do want to say, though, is, uh, you know, just a general comment, which is the Board of Commissioners' job is to, uh, vet items. It is to ask questions. It is to make sure that we're spending money adequately and appropriately. And, um, the insinuation that, uh, we are just, you know, dragging our feet on purpose because we like, don't like seniors or something like that is frankly asinine. And I think that there's, uh, unfortunately, um, you know, there are some legitimate questions that came out of our meeting the other day. Um, some questions which remain unanswered. One of the questions that I remember asking is, what was the process that uh, got us to this point? That question was unanswered. Perhaps you all in the room know the answer to that question because you had to go through it. But as a commissioner, I believe, you know, it's my responsibility to know what that process looked like. Um, there were concerns about the discrepancy between Dexter and Ypsilanti um, and how much money was being allocated to each. I think that's a legitimate concern. There were concerns about Phoenix. I still have not, I don't know what Phoenix is beyond the comment that was just made. Um, I would love to learn more. If I were there tonight and it came off the table, I would want the money probably to be allocated instead of to Phoenix to, uh, the ride and the wave and all of our transit providers in the county. And then let them partner with Phoenix, if that's what they want to do, to provide those services. But I, I actually think that would be more appropriate than giving the money directly to Phoenix. I have no issues with the other providers. Love Food Gatherers, uh, Meals on Wheels does great work.
Commissioner Robbie, you're out of time. Can you just wrap it up real quick?
Yeah, I actually can't see the time on my screen. So thank you for that. I was actually wrapping up. So, uh, you know, I have no issues with a lot of the nonprofits that came forward. Um, you all do really good work. I thank you for your advocacy. Just wanted to make those few comments and sorry I can't be there with you tonight.
All right. Thanks for calling in. All right. Ashley, anybody else online for public comment? No, there's no one else. Uh, last call for anyone in the room. Before we move to commissioner response to public comment, uh, I will also take this opportunity since we're moving out of public comment. To, uh, remind my friends at the, the table here that we received a number of written public comments that are visible to you in board portal. So in addition to the comments that were made in the room, we also have a bunch of written ones that we received. Uh, we also received many emails and other forms of communication. Uh, with that, I'll turn to commissioner follow-up to public participation. Uh, I would just start off by saying for those of you that came to, uh, give a comment about, well, anything, anything, thank you all for coming. Uh, but if you came to give a comment about the senior RFP, it's the last item on our agenda. I'm sorry about that. So I hope that you will stick around till we get to that very exciting point of the agenda, but it is the last item. So that's, I'll, I'll just leave it there for now. Uh, Commissioner Labar.
Thanks Chair. I, I also appreciate the, uh, advocacy that's been given tonight and in email. Um, I will just say, one individual spoke about intent and I always worry about questioning intent. Um, I think the minutes don't reflect out of necessity and Bryce, thank you. Some of the, the discussion that happened at the last meeting, um, I think Commissioner Robbie spoke to that. That as commissioners, we want to understand not just the substance of what's proposed and the problems that we're seeking to address. But enough about the process to be able to explain some of the apparent disparities. I probably could have done a better job articulating that at the meeting in public. And so if there's any confusion about my intent or anybody else's, uh, I'd, 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 I'd ask your forgiveness, but I'd make you the assurance. There was never an effort to, to kill this in a passive fashion. It, it will come off the table tonight. We will discuss it. I suspect it will be supported. But I would ask you just to consider that if we, if we pass that and then can't answer some of the questions that we are rightly asked. About the equity within that overall $3.8 million and how we decided to allocate it. That also is a, is a challenge and an issue. So I, I appreciate the, the understanding, uh, for extra time. Very quickly too, on the comments about homelessness and the county's response, I just want to be clear. Um, one, there's a lot more work to do. Two, much of that work is far beyond the scope of the county and county government. Uh, but we will, we will play our role in that. Three, the proposal that should be here in two weeks is administration's recommended response. Give us your input on that. I will in no way, shape or form tell you that anything we've ever done on homelessness is adequate to meet the needs. Um, I suspect we will continue to come up short in that as long as we exist as a structure of government. Um, but trying to close that gap and close it in as, uh, ef- ef- efficient and humane and. Comprehensive way as possible is, is really the best we can do. So we will continue that. Please continue your, uh, your advocacy on that. Uh, and I appreciate again, the time everybody's invested in coming here tonight or in the emails. It's appreciated. Uh, and thank you for your thoroughness. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Labar. All right. I saw Commissioner Somerville next. I'm keeping an eye out for everyone. All right. Commissioner Somerville, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah. Um, to follow up on public comment, um, there were comments made about. My role on the commission on aging. So I'll start by addressing that. Um, as commissioners, we all choose and are appointed to a number of boards and commissions where we serve as board liaisons. We don't serve in that capacity to only, um, reflect or represent the desires of the, the body. Um, we're the liaison between the board and that body. Um, saying that, I care deeply about issues for older adults, both in my capacity as commissioner and what I do in my, uh, regular day job. Um, I thought it was pretty clear in my comments last week that I had serious concerns with where we landed with the reopening. Of the, um, RFP. I wasn't elected to this position to just serve as a representation on the commission on aging. I was elected to serve the, the, the people of the sixth district. And to be, you know, I plan to, um, support taking this off the table and I plan to support it to get the funds out. But it doesn't mean that I actually support how we got here. I'm actually really uncomfortable with how we got here. Um, I think that there are huge disparities between other organizations and Ypsilanti, which is where I represent. I think, um, if you look at the low opportunity index for our county, you'll notice that my district has a serious high concentration of. Individuals who have low opportunity, people served by the Ypsilanti Senior Center fit that. They're very in the. Low opportunity zone. YPSI Senior Center is under-resourced. They were one of the people who didn't get adequate communication when the bid reopened. It is my job to represent my district, not the commission on aging. Do I love my role and, and the work that the commission on aging does and represents? Absolutely. My job sitting here at this table is to represent the people that elected me. The people who elected me spent time at the Ypsilanti Senior Center are served by Ypsilanti Meals on Wheels. Who else didn't get additional funding when the bid reopened? Ypsilanti Meals on Wheels. I have issues with how we got here. As a commissioner, I need to feel comfortable with decisions that I'm making. I did not feel comfortable two weeks ago. Am I a little less uncomfortable now? Yes. Am I happy? A hundred percent happy with where we are? No, I'm not. Do I want to get the funds out as soon as possible to help people? Absolutely. Am I going to walk away tonight still upset that Ypsilanti is underrepresented with $3.8 million? Absolutely. We have a need to expand services at the Ypsilanti Senior Center. And I don't feel like my district had adequate time to put in a new request for additional funding. And then the ones who did got denied for reasons that I don't agree with. So that is why I'm here. And that is why I will continue to vote and make decisions at this table on what I believe in and what people who recommend. Voted for me, wanted me to do. And that is to represent my district and make the best decisions for the people that I serve.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Beaman.
Thank you Chair. I also want to thank everyone who came out to speak this evening. Uh, your passion is there, your care is there. Whether we were speaking on seniors or housing or other issues, it takes a lot to come before this body. And so I thank you, I thank you for that. Um, I'm gonna really echo a lot of what Commissioner Somerville said. I didn't like where we landed. I didn't like how we got where we landed. I'm not appreciative of the representation that is in this packet. I just think I said that wrong. I appreciate every organization that is here. I appreciate the fact that every organization that has spoken tonight needs additional funding. No one came here with overflowing money bags, asking for an additional scoop on top. Everyone here is doing the work on a shoestring budget and I'll call it half a shoestring for some of you, maybe not even a shoestring. When we are reviewing items and processes, we need to make sure that that equity is there. That is a decision that this board voted on years ago, that we are going to look at everything through an equity lens. And that is my concern here. Um, I obviously also have concerns that my district is underrepresented on this list. Uh, we'll talk about this a lot later, so I'm not going to super hash it out now. But when we look at something like Phoenix that has been here since 2018. I'm a data girl. I like longevity. Wave has been here since 1976 and there was not a proposal from Wave in this packet. That concerns me. So we will discuss it later. Again, I thank you for all of your advocacy, for your work. None of you in this room do easy work. You all do a lot for our community. And I appreciate every one of you and much like Commissioner Somerville and others at this table, I don't want to delay these funds. Thank you.
All right. I saw Commissioner Scott next.
Thanks Chair. Um, I just want to tell everybody, thank you. It's really great to see a full room. Um, and I imagine many of you will leave before we get to the end of the meeting where we talk about whether we're going to take the. ARP funding for seniors on or off the table. Um, it has been a difficult decision for me to try to figure out what to do in this instance. Because when I, um, first ran and every time I continued to run, one of the things that I run on is transparency in government and good government. And I still don't believe, uh, that that second round of ARP funding was done in the most transparent of manners. And I expressed my concerns about the way we have some bid and procurement processes in this county. I have concerns that the YPSI Senior Center, who was in the first round of funding, didn't even know. That there was a second round of funding that opened. It was five days. It was very quick. There is some serious issues that happened with this bucket of funds. That being said, the funds are there and I have appreciated talking to some of the people in our community benefits organizations and nonprofits about the difficulty is. Of having to. Uh, do this whole RFP process over again and how difficult that is for them because of the capacity they have in their organizations. So that knowledge will inform the way I, I vote this evening. But it does not take away from what Commissioner Somerville has said, what Commissioner Beaman has said. And what I'm saying here about the way I feel that this RFP was handled. And the lack of transparency and the lack of equity that we have and the way these funds are being given out. I know the importance of senior centers and senior programmings. Uh, a few years ago, I think probably after we got through the worst of COVID. Um, my mom was struggling, I think with that senior isolation that people have. And I told her, you gotta go out and find something to do. And she found the senior center in her community. And she goes and plays mahjong once a week and they have a fantastic lending library that she goes and takes books. If I have to hear about that lending library one more time. She goes and takes books out of there. She has a whole new group of friends that she goes out to dinners with. I think it changed my mom's life. I want the ability for seniors in all communities to be able to have those same connections that my mom had. Whether you are in Manchester, Dexter, Chelsea, Ypsilanti or Milan. I want it across the board. And that's what I'd like to see us be able to do with funds like this. Uh, I, I will, um, vote for these funds to get them into the community, but we have to do better. Um, some of my colleagues have heard ideas I've had about how we can try to improve this process. And hopefully we'll get there because this wasn't it. Just so you're clear, this was not it. Second, to those of you asking, uh, about the shelter. Um, I will not be at the next meeting, um, in October, but I will be listening and to hear what the administrator says about that. We absolutely are in dire need of more, uh, capacity to help people. Um, at any time of year, but especially as we come into the winter. And so, um, part of my ideas of moving forward is to really have, uh, get a handle on what our capacity is in the county. What services are out there and advocate for more services as we go forward. And I just want to say you have champions on this board of commissioners. Um, to talk about housing and I know every one of us is, is that person. But in particular, I just want to note that Commissioner Somerville is incredibly passionate about this. And I know, um, I know that the item won't be dropped by, where she's got it. She's like a dog with a bone and I love that. So thank you very much. Thank you to my colleagues. Thank you for being here. I do know it is hard to get up and stand in front and talk in front of this body. So I appreciate you coming out to, to talk to us this evening. Thanks.
Anybody else friends? Other responses? Commissioner Machieski.
Thank you. Thank you Chair. Uh, as well, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and offering comment. Uh, I'm going to reserve my comments on the senior services item when we get to that part of the agenda. Um, but I did want to make a note, I know Mr. O'Reilly from the Chelsea Senior Center mentioned that the only funds that he gets. From the county are for the Meals on Wheels program and technically those aren't county funds. Those are funds from the area agency on aging. They get passed through the county. And that is the situation with, um, the funds that the county gets. They actually get some from area agency on aging one B and they're passed through. So I just wanted just to note that as well for me to understand that. I also want to note the, the continued public comment that we have on the unhoused population. And I look forward to getting the report and I look forward to hearing the, the feedback and the comments that we get from the public on that. Um, so we can move forward in advance of the winter season. On that issue as well, but I'll reserve the rest of my comments for the agenda. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders.
So I have, have and do sit on a number of boards that are external to the county commissioners. And have done so for probably the last 25 years. Um, and I used to accuse somebody else of this, but now I have to own the hat myself. Um, I consider myself to be an equal opportunity offender. So when I grill and ask questions, I do that across the board. Um, and I would expect that because, um, there are inquiries. That instead of being defensive and accusatory. People would just simply attempt to get the answers to the questions. And I think that we were clear, I was clear at the last meeting, that I supported the seniors. But I had questions. And I asked some of the questions that were not, um. Answered in enough detail and I will own that possibly I was not. Clear enough about the level of detail that I wanted. Um, but I will say that it is, you know, we are, nobody wants to hear this, but we are human as well. Um, I don't like ambush. I did get some communication from a limited number of the agencies. And out of this packet that we have, I just tried to do some dirty math. Because one of my questions was about the percentage of the funding that was being asked for going directly to salaries. And so one of the agencies was kind enough to invite myself, um, and Commissioner Light. Out for a tour and to give us some more information. Um, I had been to their facility before, but not as in-depth. Um, and I just want to share for, for the public to understand. Um, somewhat as, um, Commissioner Somerville stated. We are elected to be fiduciaries on behalf of the county. That is one of our major responsibilities to make sure that we are doing the appropriate things with the funding that we have. And for us as a body to want more information about how this money is being spent and the impact. I don't think, and I won't apologize for it. I'm going to keep doing it. But when I go through here and I see three of these applications, 70% or more go straight to salaries. Two are 66% or more, two are 52% or more, three are 17 to 35%, three are zero. So the three areas that I had questions about were salaries, equipment and other. Other is very broad, doesn't tell you anything. What does that mean? If we are asking you for information, instead of being offended by it, just provide the information. Many of you don't even know what the process is that we. Go through in order to get the information and to make informed decisions when we're asked to approve funding. And I think it's insulting that the only time that we hear from you is when maybe you're not, you think that you're not getting your way. We're all available. We are part-time. Uh, I, I, I think I want to reiterate that. We are part-time. Uh, but we still manage to stretch ourselves so that we can find out as much information as possible. And I typically don't try and call out specific comments, but I am to say passively killing it. I don't know who was in this meeting two weeks ago. Cause that was not part of the discussion. The discussion was we had questions. Questions. Um, and to say that we're not taking it seriously, that's laughable. We are taking it seriously. This is not our money. We are stewards of this money. And you have a coalition of people that that believe that your efforts are important, but there is a whole other set of individuals in this county that we have to be accountable to. So to ask what is being done with this money and why is so much of it going towards salaries and not towards actual services? Which yes, the people do deliver the services. But I'm not going to apologize for asking for clarification. I'm not. And I'm not going to apologize for calling out whether or not an entity is based here in Washtenaw County or based in Michigan. Anybody that has had an opportunity to talk to me, I am about local labor, giving our residents opportunity for employment. I think I even asked how many of your staff are seniors? How many of them are seniors? So I'm, I just needed to call out, you know, we get our feelings hurt on a regular basis. It's daily. And we're just supposed to be able to, you know, we're expected to just be, you know, grownups and just deal with it. But I do think that there is a level of respect that could be improved between the entities that help us deliver services to our residents and us as the individuals that have to answer for why we said yes or why we said no. I had no intentions nor do I of passive passively killing anything. And I think I was very clear in my opinion, that we needed to make sure that we were making this move forward expeditiously, that this would not be drawn out. So I want to, I don't like it when people try and spin my work, my efforts, and especially my heart. So this never was an issue of us not providing the funding that we agreed to set aside in the first place. But if someone, in the, I guess, the other thing I would say is as a person who has had to make requests for funding, fill out grant applications, justify why I'm asking for a certain amount of money, I'm typically already prepared for the pushback. I come prepared for the naysayers or the ones that are not going to support me. I've done my research on who they are. I don't know if that has occurred. But I appreciate your advocacy because that's what you're supposed to do. But I feel like we were in this room by ourselves two weeks ago. There was a whole message that was just missed completely. So that's what I had to say about that. The homeless issue, I'm not going to touch right this moment. Because it's a lot larger issue to be unpacked. And I keep saying that. But I I support the need to house our residents, our unhoused and our housing insecure residents. But in terms of the the senior agencies, I plan to to vote favorably. I never intended not to vote favorably. I just asked for more information. So I just wanted to be clear about that.
All right, Commissioner Light.
I would like to thank everyone who has come to give public comment. It is greatly appreciated. We need to know. We need you to advocate and we need to know what is going on and and how we can better serve organizations, our residents, and our community. I first want to say always remember a delay does not mean denial. It does not mean that it's not going to happen. We, as this board, we have to be good stewards of our residents of funding and we have to make sure that we are best servicing you. So there was no intent for this, the senior funding to be dissolved for us not to vote for the funding to be allocated. We support, I myself support strongly. Especially I have Dexter Township in my district and they are in need of this funding immediately. So by no means do I or the board want to delay funding or takeaway funding that is much needed. So please remember that this board does everything in the best interest of you. We are here to serve you. You elected us and we are going to do what is best for you and we have to be good stewards of you. We have to make sure that we are doing the right thing. If we don't ask questions, if we do not tread lightly and make sure we make clear and concise and be transparent and receive transparency, we are not servicing you. So I am definitely in favor and I will be voting for our seniors to receive funding. But please remember delay is not a denial and that we were, we are always working for you. Thank you.
Anybody else for response, round two responses? Everybody's already spoken. I think not. Okay, I'll respond quickly because I think most people would prefer for us to get to the voting part. So I won't take too long here. I would say that I am hopeful that we will take the item off the table. It seems that is what's going to happen based on how people have hinted how they might vote. Hopefully that will pass it. And then from there, put a lot of effort into making sure that we continue to fund additional senior serving organizations and provide more funding to other organizations that have received funding. I think there are serious concerns around certain organizations that we're aware of not submitting an application. And I think we would want to be able to do some strategic outreach to make sure that we're able to remedy that issue. And many of the points that were brought up earlier about further needs in the community. I think there's more that we can do after we pass this RFP. I'd also add that something that I've been thinking about related to the original allocations. We've talked about the $3.8 million for this. $200,000 was originally supposed to go to mapping senior services in the community. The Ann Arbor Community Foundation is already doing a lot of that work. And my hope is that we would take another look at that $200,000 and put that towards direct services or support for direct services to seniors because there's no need to do something that, you know, is already being done by a trusted community partner. Just an idea. We'll talk more about that at some point, I'm sure. What else I got on here? Housing. The freight house is brought up. The freight house is not a county property. So we can't just say we're going to use the freight house for something like that. But when you tune into our next meeting on the 18th, I think people will be pleased based on the comments that we've heard here about many of the strategies that I expect that administration and the team will be presenting to us, such as looking at acquiring rental properties and potentially having a master lease and subsidizing those for those experiencing homelessness in our community. So I mean, it's stay tuned. Like, I think a lot of the things that people have been talking about, you will be excited to see on the 18th. To the comments about the Climate Action Plan and the Resiliency Office. If you tuned in during our working session, you saw that the recommended budget from administration includes the grant funded a resiliency officer position. In addition to that, at our last meeting, we voted to create a position that would be focused on doing, getting grants from the federal government or in other places. But we know that there's a lot of environmental focus grant opportunities at the federal government level that we are missing out on. And our hope is that we'll use that position once it's filled actively to pursue those funds. So even if we don't end up in a situation where all three of the desired positions for the resiliency officer are created immediately, I think between the resiliency officer position and this grants position, we'll be able to move that timeline along quickly. That's at least my hope. And that's it for now. We're going to move on to liaison reports. Now, before I get into liaison reports, I've heard the feedback from the last meeting around some of the facilitation, my facilitation. One request that I heard is more liberal use of the gavel. So you can expect to hear a lot more of that. If conversation gets a little, little too spicy, you might hear like some of that. So you'll see, you'll see more of that. I'm also going to be more cautious about the hands and let you know when I've seen somebody and who I'm going to go to after that. Just want everybody to be happy with the flow of the conversation. So always open to feedback, criticism, comments, suggestions, all of that. But get ready to hear a lot more of that. All right. So I'll get us started with liaison reports. I was able to attend my first Area Agency on Aging 1B meeting. And it went really well. You know, I enjoyed my drive to Southfield for the meeting and my drive back. But it was a good meeting. I'm glad that we are able to be in that space. One of the things, and I will bring this up later when we're talking about funding additional senior services, is that the Area Agency on Aging 1B has, I think, been missing out on some federal matching dollars for senior services that they could be getting access to. So the the team there is made up of a number of people across the service area, including other county commissioners. So part of the conversation that we had other county commissioners there, county commissioners from other counties, let me be clear. We talked about coming together and trying to figure out how would we support the Area Agency on Aging 1B and getting the maximum federal match? So that might be a way for us to really work together with other counties across that service region and the Area Agency on Aging to be able to get more of those dollars. That's the liaison report I have today. Have I got one for me? Commissioner Light, what you got?
Oh, I was able to attend the ribbon cutting for the Home Toxins Center at the GFL Environmental space in Northville. And so I've learned a lot about how we dispose of our batteries and especially like, okay, so I have little kids and in in these toys, these batteries. And that, you know, they can be left there. Once they die, they don't play with them. We need to get rid of those. So you need to call and make an appointment. So like you can go on the website and you can look and they got all this information. You need to pay them a visit and you need to learn how to dispose of toxins that may be in your home. So it was wonderful and I'm excited about it because I learned about it and now I know.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else for a liaison report? What you got? Anybody? Commissioner Scott.
Thanks, Chair. Let me tell you guys about attending the Public Health meeting this past week. It's always, I feel like, really interesting to hear what's happening in the Public Health Department. But one of the most interesting things we heard about this past week was a racial justice impact study that is happening that the University of Michigan is partnering with the Health Department. And we had a really fantastic presentation from them about how they want to collaborate towards a kind of more just process of looking at some health issues. They identified some baseline knowledge, attitudes and practices. They're thinking about how they can initiate this really anti-racist practice and policy in the Health Department going forward. And it's, the ARC stands for anti-racist cities and counties. And the work group came and presented. I am really excited to see how this moves forward in the Health Department and how it might more work out that same process that they're doing there into more work in the county. Obviously, we talked about, we talked about this at the board table about racism is a public health crisis. It definitely impacts health. We know about the social determinants of health. We know about built environments impacting health and a lot of what we do here at this table, as you all know, is health, including the things that we're going to talk about this evening with the home programs, the home ARP. I'm mixing up my words and also the senior funding. So all of the this ARC process could work in a lot of the things that we're doing here in the county. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I was hoping that you'd give a liaison report for Board of Health and had to miss it to go to Area Agency on Aging, which, you know, doesn't, it's not always going to conflict, but you know, I'd like Board of Health too. And then to the point that you made around racism being a public health crisis, I think we should all be proud that Washtenaw County and the Board of Health had declared racism as a public health crisis years ago, and that's a model that other counties in Michigan use. Great. Anybody else? I think I hit, I had Commissioner Sanders. I'm going to get you after Somerville. Don't worry. No, I'm doing it in the order that appear.
She's forcing me.
Okay, Commissioner Somerville.
I don't know if Commissioner Sanders was going to say this, but the last Community Action Board meeting got canceled because of quorum. I was part of that because I attended an event for SOS. So I was one of the missing people, but there were several conflicts, so we haven't been able to meet. But I expect that we'll be able to meet next month, so.
So that's so somberly.
Yeah, I just wanted to, we haven't had a Community Action Board update in a while, Caroline. So I just wanted to let everybody know. It still exists. We just haven't been able to meet.
Okay. All right. Was that going to be Commissioner Sanders, what you're going to say?
No, I was, this is, and it's not even related to my my normal assignments, but I had an opportunity to tour the recycle agency off of Ellsworth. I can't even remember if it was this week or last week. That was very enlightening. It will put you to shame about your trash. But it was about an hour, hour and a half tour of that facility. I was pleasantly surprised to know that even though they are a nonprofit, they are all UAW members. Call UAW. Anyway, I got off track there for a minute, but very good paying jobs. And I was just curious about whether or not there are any, you know, I think I asked Mr. DeLu if there were any school districts that had a recycle curriculum. Because it is something that you need to grow children through adults into adjusting their lives because it is an adjustment to be conscious about every piece of trash that you have and the problems that it takes to to recycle that. Because they don't just, it doesn't just automatically break down. And we're running out of space. So, but I enjoyed that tour. Had never been there before other than to drop off items, but never actually had an opportunity to actually tour in their warehouse. And I'm sure I wore them out with my questions, but it would be something nice for all of us to be able to experience because you would change how you dispose of things in the future, especially if you've got kids or grandkids and you want to leave them something. So that's it. I always attend the World Commission meetings. I don't have anything to add for them.
All right. Thank you. I would just say for our audience, I don't think the agenda is going to take us very, very long if you're waiting to see how we vote at the end. So I just say, I mean, stick around, stay tuned. Any Commissioner Machieski?
Thank you, Chair. I was really excited to hear Commissioner Sanders' account of her tour of the recycling facility. There's another one over on Workner Road in Linden Township for the Western Washtenaw Recycling Authority. You want to come over there? Let me know. We'll set that up. I just wanted to note that some COG's Executive Committee met last Friday afternoon, received a presentation from the Michigan Department of Transportation inclusive of the 2050 Transportation Improvement Plan. So that was the really the bulk of the presentations at the agenda. And there is an upcoming, I'm on the SNCOG Healthcare Task Force. And they are having a meeting on Direct Care Workforce, actually out in Macomb County, coming up on November 1st, which I will be attending that as well. But looking forward to SNCOG issuing a report on the state of healthcare in our region as well. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? Not you, you already went. I know, I'm just, I'm just saying. Okay, no one else? All right. Well, we are going to move on. We have no special orders business, so just going right past that. No appointments. Before I look for a motion on the consent agenda, and I'm going to get you Commissioner Labarre, I would just point out there were no spicy communications. So they're all, I think, pretty easy ones for us to accept. So you know, as we've talked about before, Bryce and I continue to look at the communications that come in. And I will either recommend that we accept the communication or not accept the communication. I think it's about time we go on the offense, though. Like, we need to start sending communications out. I know, I know that was the original vision. So let's start thinking about doing that. I think Livingston County might want to, Ottawa County too, they might want to receive something from us. So with that, I would look for a motion on the consent agenda. Any discussion? None. This is a voice vote. All in favor? Any opposed? None. Okay, looking for resolutions. Who wants to move the resolutions? Commissioner Labarre?
Thanks, Chair. I appreciate that, right as you called on me, I looked like a doofus who hadn't worn a mask for, you know, three straight years. So thank you.
These things happen. You know, you handled it. It was right and good. We got done with it.
It, yes. For First Redan, under six, or excuse me, under 9A Resolution to Establish a New Discretionary Fee for Passport Photos Administered by the Clerk and Registered Deeds Office. And then B is the Resolution Approving Acceptance of the Area Agency on Aging 1B Senior Nutrition Program from OCD.
Got a second? All right. Any discussion or they might want to pull either one of these two fantastic items for separate consideration? No?
Not to pull, but I did have a question.
Commissioner Sanders, question?
So just the, just the wording when it says discretionary, that makes me nervous. So that means though, the discretionary fee, is there any meaning to that?
We are joined by.
Or is it consistently going to be applied? Or do we have an option for people that can't afford it? Or that's what I, I just need to know.
We are joined by Clerk Kestonbaum. There's a question. I know you just walked in. I don't know if you heard the question or not, but this is, this question's for you.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
I was was asking about the terminology for establishing a discretionary fee for passport photos. So when I see discretionary, that kind of indicates that you can charge it or So when I see discretionary, that kind of indicates that you can charge it or you can't charge it. And I just want to make sure that there's a process for fairness across the board, or is, am I reading too much into that word?
No, I, I think that perhaps you are. The, the providing passport photos is. A discretionary service, not a mandated service, but it's one that is convenient for customers. And the amount that. The amount that's being asked for it is, I think, you know, very reasonable in context of the. You know, and, and there, you know, people come in for passports and, and you say, well, we need a photograph. And you have to be, you have to not be smiling and it has to be, you know, certain, you know, and it's, it's, it's a lot easier to say, okay, just stand over there. We'll take the picture fifteen dollars and they're already spending a hundred, you know, or something like that on the passport. So. This is something that we used to do. It was discontinued about 10 years ago and. There's, there's an interest in this, in, in among customers of having this, and so we'd like to, we'd like to go back to that.
Thank you for that. I just wanted to make sure that we, it wasn't like we could pick and choose who we charge the fees to.
We don't want to do that.
I get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, friends? Not seeing any other questions. All right, well, we're going to go ahead and vote on the set here, and this one is a voice vote. All in favor? Any opposed? None? Okay. Bryce, I'll have something for you to do just in just a second here. I'd look for somebody to move the remainder of the resolutions here. Commissioner Labarre.
Thanks Chair. Under. Two, a single reading of resolution to approve the substantial amendment to the home ARP allocation plan from O C D. And then B, a resolution recognizing October ninth, twenty twenty-three as Indigenous, as Indigenous Peoples' Day. In Washtenaw County.
You can keep going if you want. Finish it off, finish it.
Under three, A, a resolution accepting American Rescue Plan Act funding from Ipsy Charter Township for Barrier Busters. And then claims.
Thank you. Anybody like to pull any of these for separate consideration? Not seeing any, okay. Any discussion on any of them? I, I know we do have the potential for presentations if there are questions or you are so inclined. Seeing no, no, no. Well, what a smooth meeting so far. You sure that's not a hand, Commissioner Somerville? All right. I, I mean, we're in control of that, right? I mean, I'm just saying, like, that's the thing we're in control of. All right, well, now Bryce, it's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Hatch.
Yes.
Commissioner Labarre.
Yeah.
Commissioner Light.
Yes.
Commissioner Machieski.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie.
He's not here.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Somerville.
Yes.
And Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Okay, well, boom, item's passed. I would also say that it's, I think, fantastic that we have consistently. Recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day here in Washtenaw County. That's good, that's good. Okay, on to report from the county administrator, cybersecurity update. Wow us with cybersecurity update.
Thank you, Commissioners. Before we get into the cybersecurity update, just a quick comment on the senior RFP. I've heard from each and every one of you about your concerns about that document and that process. We certainly want to make certain that we address the concerns that have been lifted up as a part of my discussions with all of you. At the foundation of our, our system should be the, an appropriate RFP framework. Making sure that there's transparency and equity as a component of that process. So we will work to make certain that moving forward, those kinds of issues get addressed. And we'll also make certain that we have a follow up to this initial RFP. That addresses many of the concerns that we have heard this evening. So I, I just want to, to offer that for all of you and introduce Tyler to all of you. Tyler Latendis, he's our cybersecurity manager and he's going to walk you through just a real quick update.
Tyler, all right.
Thank you. Yes, for getting our presentation up here.
While we went for the presentation, I believe we all received an email to do the cybersecurity training, right? And I think that's.
Definitely.
It's very critical. If you may remember, a couple of board meetings ago, some scammer out there was trying to fish using my name. Which is very frustrating. So, and they did it during the board meeting, right? Like, that was just silly. Of course, I'm not going to be asking people for fourteen hundred dollars and gift cards during a board. I mean, that's not at all.
We had one today impersonating, impersonating a deputy from the sheriff department.
Okay.
That went out to a hundred and eighty-four people in the county.
I think mine went to two hundred, just to say.
It's not a competition, but yes. All right, well, Chair of the Board, Commissioners, remotely connected Administrator Dill and other officials and leadership here with me today. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you today the state of our cybersecurity over the last twelve months. Next slide, please. I'd first like to introduce myself. Next, my name is Tyler Latander. So I'm the cybersecurity manager for Washtenaw County. I've been in this position since it was created last September. Next, and this was a repurposing Gable Blanc's role, who was the previous chief information security officer. I have been at the county in IT for seven years, but I have over a decade of IT experience. I've also spent fourteen years on the Michigan Army National Guard. Twelve of those years in leadership roles ranging from a couple soldiers to platoons of more than forty. I also hold an MBA in IT management. And I've listed some of my relevant security certifications as well. Next, please. And next one more. All right, first I would like to talk about our successes. Our first big success that I have for the previous twelve months is our cybersecurity awareness training. Which you have mentioned already that you've received notification to complete. This has greatly. It's been a big step in our, in our cybersecurity posture, training the staff and our users on how to use. How to report even cybersecurity incidents. To date, there have been more than five thousand nine hundred trainings completed. And this is. I mean, this is great. And we're also, like you mentioned as well, we started our next year's cybersecurity awareness training this week. Next, please. Part of Know Before included a Outlook plugin called the Fish Alert Button. This button allows users and staff of our county to instantly report phishing email. Or even a suspicious email to IT. We receive more than two thousand phishing email reports a month and we triage all of them. This is very important. This greatly increases our ability to respond and also our visibility into what's occurring in our county. And it's, it's also important because more than seventy-four percent of. Cyber incidents involve an employee interaction. And even recent statistic that I heard recently was eighty-eight percent of data breaches involve a phishing. So that's the exfiltration of data. Next, please. This previous January, I documented our first cybersecurity incident response plan. And this was honestly a very big step. It doesn't sound like it'd be a big step, but it is a major requirement for our. Alignment with our chosen cybersecurity framework, the CIS controls. It's also a requirement of our cyber insurer, HIPAA, the PCI data security standard. FBI criminal justice information systems and many other data regulatory requirements that we have to follow. Next slide, please. We also implemented an account lockout policy. Now, this is an essential technical security control. To really inform us of whenever a brute force attack is occurring. Beginning of the year, we had a penetration test performed on our network and our testers were able to. Brute force attempt a hundred thousand passwords on our network in eleven seconds. And we had no notification of it, that it was happening. By enabling this, we are now able to detect brute force attacks and other account related attacks as they are happening and not after the fact. Next slide, your next please. And also the benefits of what we've been performing this year. Have also shown to be financial benefits. So we've actually had a thirty-seven percent reduction in our cyber insurance premiums this year. Because of the work that has been being performed. Within the last two years of all the cyber work that, cybersecurity work that we've been doing, it's been about, I think it was sixty-six percent. Of our cyber insurance, we've had a reduction on. Next, please. So I'd like to shift over to our chosen cybersecurity control framework that we have chosen to align to. In twenty twenty-two, IT made the strategic decision to align with the Center for Internet Securities CIS controls. Now, this is like globally recognized, no nonsense, actionable set of controls. That is endorsed by states, counties all over the country. And this really allows us to. Work with these organizations and communicate in a standardized language. Next, please. Part of the CIS controls is broken down into three different implementation groups. And there are a hundred and seventy-four safeguards total or controls. Fifty-six of them are part of implementation group one. The implementation group one is considered the essential cyber hygiene. Any organization from the small mom and pop shop to global organizations should be compliant with IG one. For the CIS controls. It's the essential and it is designed to prevent over eighty percent of the most common cyber attacks. IG two is. Hundred seventy-four safeguards and I think that is a great goal for the county to be trying to align to. Implementation group three is for advanced entities. And although I don't think we should be aligning to implementation group three, there are certain controls that are part of that group. That we probably should consider as we build our cybersecurity maturity. Next, please. So I performed. An audit of ourselves against the cyber CIS controls this past September, and then I did so again this last week and compared our results. We saw an increase in our IG one score, a forty percent increase in our IG two score, a ten percent increase. And this equated to an overall increase of twenty-five percent. There's definitely still more work to do to get ourselves to a hundred percent alignment. Even though we scored a forty percent increase in our IG one, we're still sixty-six percent aligned. IG one is the essentials. We should be getting to a hundred percent and we should do as quickly as we can in a thought out and planned way. Next, please. Next again. And this leads me to my ask. I do have an ask of the board and that is for your continued support. The IT department as a whole has been a huge support to me. They, and particularly IT Director Jeff Rose. I could not do what I've been doing for the last year without their support. Security is not their skill set. It's not their job, but they've done nothing but support me. And everything that I've been asking them to do. And that goes for you all as well. I would not be able to do what I've been doing without your support and administration support. So thank you very much for that and I hope to have your continued support as we continue. Next, please. And then I also ask to be considered for more resources. I know those last working session did talk about this upcoming budget requests. And I unfortunately was not here for that, so I don't know how that landed, but. I need help. As we said today, I am the only dedicated resource in the county focused on cybersecurity. To use a common cybersecurity phrase, it's not about if an attack will happen, it's about when. And it's not. Having a cyber incident that can affect the image or trust that the citizens have in us in the county. But it's how we react to a cyber incident, how we handle it. And like I said, the skill set of the current IT staff isn't necessarily security. They're very good at what they do. But I could really use more people to help me with a security mindset, security focus to look at the problems that we have today. And then finally, I ask for a dedicated cybersecurity budget as part of IT. I do have some references on the slide, but essentially what they say is that the recommended cybersecurity budget. Would be ten to twenty percent of the total IT budget. I do encourage you to look at this. Hope that we can send this out to you, the completed slide deck at the end of this. Next, please. And with that, I would like to ask if there are any questions?
Yeah, I'd say, oh goodness, what's going on with that? We have the completed slide deck and board portal. I invite my friends yet again to get into board portal. You know, IT needs to help Commissioner Somerville get into board portal. This has come up before. Maybe we could do a board portal training because I don't think anybody's using it besides me and it's super user friendly. I mean, you could just, I got your presentation right there. Really liked the glamour shot on that first slide. It's nice. Yeah, it's very nice. Really cool. Any questions, friends? It's been sad to see just the sun go down on Greg. Just. It just went away. Excellent. All right, well, I would encourage all of my colleagues to complete the cybersecurity training. I've got it flagged and pinned to my email. And if anyone is telling you to give them a gift card, it's probably a scam. All right, tip for the day. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was a great presentation.
Okay, that, Chair, that will, will conclude my report.
That will conclude your report. Okay, it's almost nap time for you. It looks like it's dark there. I will not give a report because I think people are ready for the, you know, the main event here, so I will not, no report. I'll give a report next time. How about that? I think our board liaison will give a report next time too. I will also do that. Items for current or future discussion, number one, quadrennial budget, what was going to be said about that? We just had working session, it was great. Anybody like to? What's going to happen with that? It's on here. Thing is just on here for, go please.
Well, it will be presented on, I think, November first for your first reading. It stays on here because every. Meeting, we're going to be talking about a topic on it.
Does anybody want to ask you any questions right now? They are frowning at me. So, no, thank you. I mean, that's great. We will have more questions at a later time. All right, now we're on to the resolution recommending funding for older adult services. So what I would be looking for at this point, if somebody were so inclined, would be a motion to take it off the table. And I would say motions to take things off the table are not debatable. Commissioner Machieski?
Thank you, Chair. I moved to take from the table the motion relating to the senior services RFP from our last meeting.
There's plenty of supports over there. All right, Bryce, roll call us.
Commissioner Labarre.
Yeah.
Commissioner Light.
Yes.
Commissioner Machieski.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Somerville.
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatch.
Yes. All right, off the table. Excellent. Now we move immediately into discussion of it. So before I look for anybody that has questions or wants to make any comments, I want to draw your attention to the document that was prepared by staff. That outlined if someone were looking to do some sort of amendment, it outlines what would be recommended and what wouldn't be recommended. Recommended, I think, is. A loose word here. What was Corporation Council not? We didn't want to say legal or illegal based on use of federal funds. There could be consequences for any sort of kind of amendment. That's outlined here. We could ask Michelle too, if there's any other questions. But you got the, you got the document there. Hopefully, everybody, people are taking a look at it. Any questions or thoughts about it right now? I think we, some of us responded during response to public comment about it. I know some of you might have more to say. No, Commissioner Machieski, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I just, first of all, I appreciate the comments that have been made earlier in the meeting by members of the board. I did, you know, I, I. Totally agree with Commissioner Sanders' comments about asking questions. That's what our role is. To ask questions, gain understanding. You know, turn things upside down and around and investigate and make decisions based upon that. And I appreciated at the last meeting, the idea that, you know, some questions existed for people and they wanted a chance to explore them. That was two weeks ago. You know, I took that opportunity as well, and specifically, there was one item that was presented for funding. That I knew a little bit about, but I wanted to learn more about. So I put a call into Phoenix Transportation. Because I wanted to get a deeper understanding of who they are and what they do. And I appreciate Rebecca, the time you spent with me on the phone, answering my questions and then going through that. And what I learned is that. And I will say that I do have a little bit of familiarity with transportation. My agency runs a transportation program, albeit small. But I was very impressed by the explanation of what they're trying to do and the coordination. That they are trying to bring to transportation services, which are amongst the top three things that older adults request in terms of services. And I think what, what they're proposing to do would nearly revolutionize the way transportation could be handled. And I was also. Very impressed to learn of the. And I was also, um, very impressed to learn of the list of supporters that they have here in Washington County. I believe, uh, an email was sent out yesterday to members of the board listing those letters of support. And, uh, I, I just wanna note, um, they, they include a, a whole lot of different agencies, Disability Network of Washington, Monroe Livingston, WAVE, which is a transportation provider in the western part of the county. Uh, Island Seniors for Healthy Living, the Ann Arbor Community Foundation, Ann Arbor Spark, Center for Health and Research Transformation, also known as CHIR, Washington Health Initiative, People's Express, the Turner Senior, um, Wellness Program, Silver Club Memory Program, Michigan Medicine. Um, it is quite a list of supporters that they have had with their proposal. And I came away from that conversation and asking those questions of Rebecca, um, you know, very enthusiastic about what Phoenix is proposing to do on transportation. And, uh, you know, so uh, I, I support, uh, this proposal tonight. I appreciate the taking of it off the table. Uh, the ability to look at it again this evening. Uh, I do plan on voting for it and, uh, you know, thank everybody for their diligence and taking a look at this. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Somerville.
Thank you. Um, as I indicated earlier, I do plan on supporting this. Um, I do wanna thank, uh, Administrator Dill and, um, Chair Hodge for continuing to work with me on increasing support for Ypsilanti Meals on Wheels and Ypsilanti Senior Center beyond just these one-time dollars. Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Beaman, was that a hand coming up?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I do still have reservations around Phoenix and I unfortunately was not able to connect with Rebecca because much like Yusif, I just returned to the land of the living yesterday. So I have been very, uh, my entire family. It's not, not nice. Anyway, I digress. Um, my concern with Phoenix and I understand a bit about the mission and the connections and, and all of those things is that I do truly believe in organizations that have a bit more longevity. Now, I come from the world of entrepreneurship. That's my day job. And five years and under, you're a startup and you're a startup. Uh, not saying startups aren't great. That's where I work. That's what I love. They can bring, bring great innovation to spaces. But when we do have organizations like Wave, that's been around since nineteen seventy-six, the People's Express, that's been around since two thousand and seven, I would have less hesitation with those organizations coming forward, as was mentioned, I, I believe it might have been Commissioner Sanders tonight. And then, um, you know, choosing to circle back to work with Phoenix, I would be more comfortable with that situation. Again, just given the longevity, the track record, the data. When we talk about the letters that were sent, absolutely every single letter I received did not have one piece of impact in it. It didn't tell me how many people were served in Washington County. It didn't tell me how many rides. It didn't give me any of that information. When I go to the website, that information is also not there. It's given nationally because you are a national organization. You are not solely for Michigan. Um, so I have, again, concerns around that. I also personally appreciate every organization, um, supporting you with these letters. It was a very form-based letter. And again, it, it just didn't have the data that, that I needed, uh, to really feel excited to move forward with this. So again, I'm not saying that the service isn't needed, isn't utilized within the community. I'm saying that I haven't, um, haven't seen the proof of concept specifically for Washington County. So, thank you.
Welcome. Uh, I didn't see a hand. Yeah, Commissioner Scott, go ahead.
Uh, hi, thanks very much, Chair. I just wanna, um, I also didn't have a chance to connect with Phoenix just because of life. Um, but I, one of my concerns is around our, um, policy at the county to look for, uh, local uh, vendors to do this work. This is a, not a local vendor and there are local vendors that can do the work. And, um, I have concerns about that and I think that there are probably some local vendors that could use the money. I, I understand Phoenix is getting funding from some other sources in the county, including the university. That, that in and of itself doesn't disqualify them for it, but I would much rather see us, uh, spending money towards, um, things like the Wave and to the People's Express. Thanks.
Anybody else? Not seen anybody else. Okay, uh, my comments on this would be that, as I said earlier, I am committed to finding additional funds for us to be able to fund other senior-serving organizations such as WAVE. WAVE did not apply to this RFP, but my hope is that we will find a way to, uh, support WAVE and many other organizations. Uh, and I defy anybody to point out a time in which I haven't kept my work. So I'm saying I will work with the team for us to find another way forward, should we pass this RFP. Administrator Dill is nodding and is saying, Justin is a man of his word. Alright, uh, Bryce, we will go ahead and roll call both this.
Commissioner Light.
Yes.
Commissioner Machieski.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Somerville.
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Commissioner Labar.
Oh, that's everybody. Alright, we have passed it. Okay, so we will continue working to find additional fines. And as I mentioned earlier in my report related to the area agency on agent one B, I'm very excited about the potential for greater partnership with them. Uh, with that, I would say, does anybody have any other items for current or future discussion? I saw Commissioner Scott first and then I'll go to Labar after that.
Well, thank you, Chair. I have two questions and one, I will just wait until, um, Administrator Dill is back in town. As I said, I won't be at the next meeting in October. So hopefully in that first part of November, I can get an update about the engagement process. And I think we sent out an RFP on it. I'd just like to know where we are in that process about getting that employee engagement out. I see him nodding. He's also saying, Katie, you're awesome. Thank you. Alright, we are getting to get to say what Greg is saying. I'm gonna.
You gotta jump in there too. Alright.
Also, Commissioners, um, I mentioned this at the last meeting, but, um, I, I talked about the fence that MDOT is wanting to put up around the train tracks. Um, I, this is gonna be ridiculous to try to show you this, but it is a, can, can you see? Look at theirs in the camera, camera. I don't even know where this, but there is, um, is a huge swath. I thought that actually a lot of it went through my district, but I think it's probably, um, Commissioner Labar and no, none of your district.
If, if, if I made here.
Please.
Uh, Commissioner Scott, are you referencing the one kinda by the Huron River or the one by the M fourteen ramp?
Uh, it's all around the river.
Commissioner Light would like to see the map.
Take the map with you.
That, that is yes, but not by M fourteen, if that makes sense.
Well, it is a huge swath of the river and I went to the meeting that MDOT had about it this week. And it was really enlightening because they had at least three different slides where they said they've been working with us on, on this. I'm just curious if I'm the only one who hasn't gotten any communication from them. Yeah, three different slides where they were positive that they were working with the city and the county on creating this fence. Um, what's that? Oh, share. Oh yeah, of course I can share.
Yeah, sure, sure, yeah.
I, I, uh, told them that I, that I didn't like to say they were lying, but they were lying. And, um, there's also a lot of community, uh, opposition to the fence and, um, I think that we're probably gonna have to work with our friends in Lansing to try to get any movement on this. There are a lot of environmental concerns uh, about this fence. Additionally, they're saying it's because there's places where there's near misses. There've been seven, um, so this is a lot of fence for, for seven near misses. And when you look at the maps that I just had, it shows those near misses are really congregated in certain areas. So MDOT is gonna build this fence with no talk about building an underpass or overpass. Um, there's a reason why there's near misses in those areas, cause people are trying to get to places and they're crossing in the same place. So if they're not gonna address that, they're not really addressing the issue. The environmental concern is building this fence along the river, taking up a lot of vegetation and that's gonna create even more flooding in certain areas. So, um, I'd like to see us create a resolution about it. I'm happy to work on that. I think uh, I just got pointed to by, uh, Commissioner Hodge. So I think he just assigned me to that. Um, I, I'm actually very passionate about it. So I think we should have a resolution here at the board table uh, opposing this fence and that we need to really work with contacting our legislators in Lansing because, um, MDOT, I don't know that they're gonna listen to us per se, but they might listen to them. So do what you can to reach out to your elected representative, which might be mine or your boss. Uh, that's a good person. That's a good person to talk to. Okay, good. Um, because it was just egregious at that meeting, the way they stood up and told us that they were working with the city and the county. Um, that was a bald-faced lie. Uh, I have pictures of the slides if you wanna see those too. So get ready, buckle up. We're all gonna go stand out arm in arm and block the fence. Okay.
That sounds good to me. Uh, it sounds like a potential communication we could send out, you know, on the offense. And yes, I, you, you know, you're getting gavel assigned and then, uh, pointing at Ashley to work with you on getting a resolution for the next meeting. Fantastic. Uh, Commissioner Labar, go ahead.
Thanks, Chair. Um, I just wanna reference, just prior to the meeting, I sent on an email, uh, to the board and some of our administrative team. Um, I do think we're at a point where we should assess the structure of OCED going forward. Um, I, I lay out in the email some of my thinking, um, and I, I encourage feedback, thoughts, uh, formal and informal uh, conversation and so forth, and just wanted to flag that for colleagues. Thanks.
Administrator Dill likely has his hand up because that assessment is actively occurring. Uh, so go ahead.
Uh, that's correct. I, I just wanted to say that. I did respond to Commissioner Labar's email. That assessment is in the queue, uh, and in fact, I will have an update from the assessment sometime before the end of October. That has been in the queue for some time now. And we are also looking at other opportunities to provide uh, both interim and long-term leadership, uh, in that space. We did, we had a position that was posted. We moved through our process, didn't select a candidate because of a variety of things, but that position is continued to be post, is continued to, to be posted and we are looking for opportunities uh, to fill the void in the OCED space.
Thank you for that. Big things coming to OCED. Uh, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I, I appreciate the response from the administrator, both, both now and in writing. Um, I, I, I would still be interested offline and, and thoughts from colleagues and would appreciate that.
Please respond to Commissioner Labar's email and writing or, or, yes, do not, do not reply all. Just talk to him. Alright, let's have a conversation. Uh, any other items for current and future discussion? Look at this, we have no pending items. I got us out of here by nine o'clock. Okay, I'd look for a motion to adjourn. So a second, all in favor, we are adjourned.